Hey guys. How are you Brad? Hey Luke?
Hi Liz.
Hey Liz. How are you?
Good, how's it going?
Good. I wanted to give you heads up that someone may have taken your popcorn out of your bag on your desk in the council chamber.
Thank you for letting me know.
I don't know if it was me or not, but I'm just telling you that.
Let's pull the security tapes and find out. Get to the bottom of that, I had a trigg.
I just am telling you that you maybe have everything except for popcorn in your bag. Sorry.
Okay, that's all right. If it was you, I forgive you.
Want to go live with your video?
Oh.
Counsel, we will call this work session to order for the record Tuesday, the 23rd, 21 at 4:32 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
There are no changes to the agenda, so I make a motion to adopt the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion as second to adopt the agendas published. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is agreed to. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
One item on the consent agenda, item 13. That if we could, I would like to pull that for very brief discussion and explanation.
Okay.
Mayor, with that.
Councilman Burnt.
We'll move the, we'll move item 13 to items moved from the consent agenda. Minus that, I move that we move, move that we approve the consent agenda. Amended consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
I have a motion as second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The items are agreed to. Next is the items moved from the consent agenda, which is the approval of the AIA GM's CMGC contract for pre-construction services for fire stations seven and eight and police precincts one and two. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Borton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, the questions that I had for finance and Mr. Watts who I see here was. Is the decision on, on two stations, two precincts at once or separate, I know there's future discussions to be had on that and. And that coupled with some of the more recent legislative developments with funding for cities, I wanted to give at least myself some clarity on what this contract would commit us to. Maybe it's just a reminder of what it would commit us to and what it doesn't commit us to. So just ensuring that we've got the flexibility to pivot and make. That future decision on one versus two at a later date. So I thought maybe Keith could provide some clarity on that.
Watts?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton. You know, these, these agreements, the agreement right now is for pre-construction services for, for two stations. Pre-construction. It's going to take us through schematic design, so we're not even getting into construction drawings at this time. The construction manager is brought on board to assist with design and essentially they're going to work to get you budget estimates for the two stations. So when we come back in the future, we can give you some qualified information and let council decide whether or not we want to go with one or two stations. Or zero for that matter, but just to bring qualified information back to council. So this does not tie us into any further development. And we can stop this at any time during this development and this agreement doesn't, does not take us into construction drawings.
Thank you. One, one, just quick follow-up question. Keith, doing it this way did save a little bit of money, right? Trying to do the, this pre-construction for both.
It has, yes. And the idea is it will save an even greater amount when we move forward for construction if we do, if we do decide to do two stations.
Okay, but that decision's at a later date?
Correct. This is, and the contractors are all aware of this. They know where we're at, that we're just going through. We're going to go through schematic design. Get information to bring back to council, so council can make a educated decision on what direction to move forward.
Okay. Thanks Keith. Mr. Mayor, did you have any other questions? That just helped clarify where we were in the process.
With that, council, is there further discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
I think that if we approve this, it sort of gets us closer to a planning cost estimate that would help us make an informed decision. So. I move that we go ahead and approve item 13.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the item is agreed to.
Thank you.
Thanks Keith. Next item is our department commission reports is the city benefit recommendation. I will turn this over to Director Ritchie N. Lavoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you. So on behalf of the compensation committee, Todd and I want to thank you for your time this afternoon. It is essential that the city attracts and retains highly qualified individuals to deliver exceptional services every day. To achieve these service standards, the city must employ individuals who exemplify our city's care values. Fostering a culture attractive to such employees depends on many factors, including a compensation or excuse me, a competitive compensation program. So Todd and I are here today requesting your consideration and approval to update our current vacation rollover program. I sent you prior to the meeting, a document with the recommendation overview and I'm going to attempt to share my screen to walk you through that document. So. Let me see if that, let me know if you can see my screen, please. Thumbs up. Thank you so much, Councilmember Borton. So we do currently today have a vacation rollover program in place. We are in front of you today asking for your consideration and approval to update the program. So I'll walk you through this particular change document. Currently today, our eligible employees would be those that are regular full-time general employees. Regular full-time fire union employees. Currently today, the vacation rollover program offers general employees the ability to roll up to 40 hours of vacation. Into a Percy Choice 401K account. It also gives that option to the fire union employees, however, they have the option or had the option to roll up to 50 hours. The allowable redemption method under today's current program was a conversion conducted at a one-to-one ratio. And it was limited to just contributions into the Percy Choice 401K program. So the comp committee has taken a look at this particular program and what we're presenting to you today would be an update to this program so that all regular full-time employees. Who have been employed with the city for at least 24 months would be eligible to participate. Fire union employees would be governed by the collective labor agreement. Rather than an up to 40 or up to 50 hours, as noted in the current program today, what we're recommending is that eligible employees have the ability to convert. Any amount of their accrued vacation leave balance of at least 50% of their maximum possible vacation accrual annually as of March 31st. All eligible employees must maintain a minimum vacation balance of at least 50% of the maximum allowable vacation accrual in order to participate in the program. We'd like to continue to offer it at a one-to-one ratio, but we would like to expand the option to roll those vacation hours. Into either the Percy 401K choice or the state 457, but it would be limited to one or the other. And then all vacation rollover conversions would not be eligible for the retirement match program. That's an overview of the changes that Todd and I on behalf of the compensation committee are presenting for your consideration and approval today and Todd and I. Sit, if you will, for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Crystal. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Just one clarification. The allowable redemption methods, the conversions will be invested into these Percy Choice. Or the 457, but to make it clear, they're not able to get any type of. Addition to their check or direct from the city. Is that correct?
Councilmember Burnt, that is correct. It is a rollover into a retirement account, not a cash out option.
Cash out option. That's what I was looking for. Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you, Crystal. Could you elaborate on the paragraph that says all eligible employees must maintain a minimum vacation balance 50%. Of the maximum allowable vacation to participate in the program? That needs to be held during, how long do they need to keep it at that balance? Is that, is that an annual requirement or can you? Talk about the timeframes for that?
Yep. So we want to offer benefits to our employees, but we also want to offer, we also want them to maintain a work-life balance. So what we're saying in order to participate in the program, they have to maintain a vacation balance to be able to use for vacation purposes. And in this case, we are recommending that at 50% of their accrual balance, that they would be eligible to roll those over. And still maintain a vacation balance for those vacation needs. So they're not able to roll all accrued vacation, just 50% of their maximum accrual. So that they maintain vacation ability. During the 12 months before the next rollover option, at this point in time, finance and HR would designate a point in time of March 31st. That we would pull the accruals to determine who is eligible. We would communicate that out to the employees that they are eligible and here is the amount that they have available to roll and that would occur in May.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just a quick question for Todd. If you can give us the snapshot of the fiscal impact.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton. This is a tough one to do. This is a second year program, so we don't have a lot of trend data yet on the use of, using, the use of this program. We only have one year. We had 16.43% of the people participate last year. So if we use the same 17% estimate that people will actually use this program. Based on our projections, we see about $125,000 as a potential cost to the city of Meridian for this year's. Rollover program, assuming 17% of the people maximize their full cash out opportunities. So there's a lot of variables here, but that's the best we got after one year of data.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and just to follow up on that question, I guess the question that I did not hear discussion is, is this for the upcoming FY '22 budget consideration? Is that their recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I apologize. I should have clarified that. We are asking for that for FY '21. To be effective this spring.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just a clarifying question. If it's, if it's want to be brought in fiscal year '21. From a budgetary standpoint, is that a. Is finance or HR planning to bring like a budget amendment to cover those particular costs or is it built into the. Compensation that's already assigned to each employee?
Mayor, I'm happy to take this one for you. The budgetary situation for this one right now is we may need to do a budget request in fiscal '21. My guess, my estimates on the current budget situation right now is that we'll have, we'll have available revenues over expenses. That should be able to absorb $125,000 for the entire city of Meridian's expected costs here. We can reevaluate our finances in June and if we need to do a budget amendment to make the budget whole, we can present to you in June. But I think as of right now, the city has the bandwidth to absorb $125,000 in additional costs split between two funds, the general and the enterprise fund.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Thanks, Crystal, and maybe for Todd as well. I think it would be helpful if you could give us an idea of how meaningful this could be to someone. So. You know, how, how, I don't remember exactly how many days people get, but how many days would be eligible? For this rollover and do we have an estimate of like the average? Maximum benefit for employees or just, so give me a ballpark example.
Sure. I, Ms. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater. So of the data that we have, again, please know this is all, a lot of this is projection hypotheticals. The largest value that we could potentially see for one employee would be right around $12,000 in a payout. That's if they exercised 100% of their eligible hours and rolled over 100% of that. The average using the data is about $1,500 if every single employee that's eligible did exercise an opportunity to. Cash out or roll over the money into a post-retirement account.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, the, the one thing that I, I wanted to at least get counsel's temperature on this concept. You know, from a practical standpoint, I'm much more and I, I would treat this personally more like an education reimbursement. Where we, under our budget plans, we've got an intent to participate in the program, which can help us build a dollar figure for upcoming budgets. I don't, I have not talked to Todd about that process in terms of Crystal, in terms of how that would look, but. At least would give us a better idea each year, if we want to go this way, what the actual costs. Could be by having the employees say it's my intention in FY '22 to participate. And then we could actually run numbers and put an associated amount into the budget for consideration. So those are some of the conversations that I, I would like to have with. Staff at the appropriate time in terms of how to administer it, but I think it's at least right now, you know, for me, it's, do you see value in, in. Adjusting the program, knowing that there is a cost. Or not, or is it always going to be each year based upon what the cost would be is going to be the impactful conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Does action on this item, does it require stating a date, effective date? You know, is it, is it starting with the March payroll or starting with X pay period that would be referenced or what's the recommendation with that?
Mr. Mayor, if I, I could take this one for you. The date that we do need to have this approved by would be. Your March 23rd council hearing, because I'm assuming the fifth council hearing on March 30th would not be held. So the 23rd of March during a council presentation is when we need to have this. Because the dates, as you referenced, Joe, are March 31st and the policy, we want to respect the policy as written.
I didn't ask that very well. I think I was trying to find if we stated the effective date, so when it would, the policy would start and first be applied. For example, if we took action today, would we state that it is effective March 1st, for example, or saw Bill pop on maybe.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so what we would do is take your direction today, bring you back a policy. We'll have a resolution attached to it and in that policy, we'll have the policy and the procedures on how this is going to be implemented.
Perfect. Thank you. Makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, you know, looking at this, we've had it for one year, which is not a long timeframe to evaluate. We are giving another additional option, but only one other option of where to move that money to. And some other minor, minor tweaks to the, to the program. To your point about the, the funding and whatnot, do we ask for intent or do we just kind of go off of estimates each year? What Mr. Lavoy mentioned, you know, we're using last year. Estimate 17% usage and then we budget for that figure and then can make future adjustments. Might be an option as opposed to asking people because, you know, sometimes people. Intend to and they don't, or they didn't think about it and then it's decided that, yeah, let's do that. So that. I don't know if that intent would be to lock them in or just give us an idea. But either way, I think, you know, some sort of estimate, whether it's doing that or having that 17% or whatever finance looks at. Over the previous year would help us set that number each year and then maybe make adjustments if necessary, come towards the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, and those are, those are those questions. I think some of the challenges as well, you may remember that we up the amount of accruals that employees will get. In their vacation each year. As part of that process, that, that is going, that will have a potential impact. Because people will have more time and will they either take more time off or will they use that to reinvest into this, which, so that's 17%, while it's a good starter. You, you could have 50% employees participating next year because they have more hours than they know what to do with, or they're going to take them all and you won't. So I, I think it's going to be a learning process for several years regardless of what direction we go. And how best to administer it. It's just back to that basic question. I know it's hard to ask, sometimes make a determination when you. Have a policy change that has a financial impact, when the financial impact is the unknown. And.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I think to that point, you know, I appreciate that this has come back a year later. Maybe it's just a suggestion is that at least maybe for the next couple of years that this comes back on an annual basis. So that council has a good opportunity to kind of hear what the, that financial impact is and how it's changing and evolving. Again, my assumption would be with this year, a lot of our employees didn't have the opportunity to, to go anywhere per se. So maybe it's likely that many of them held back on their vacation. So just a thought, again, to continue maybe to bring this back on an annual basis.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
You know, I, I think it's incredibly important to save for retirement and if this is very meaningful for people, I think it makes sense to continue with the program and. Take a look at it. As Councilman Cavanagh said, I think we need to keep an eye on it probably a little more as we find out how many people use it, but. It's also important for people to take their vacation, right? It's important. I don't want employees to take away that. City council thinks you shouldn't be taking your vacation and I just want to make sure not incentivizing the wrong behavior too, right? So I appreciate that requirement to keep a vacation balance because we need people to take vacation. We need them to disconnect so that they're. Ready and ready to reconnect when they get back to work. So I don't know, that may, maybe that's the only hangup I have is a little bit of the, you know, I think it's meaningful. I, I'm supportive of it in general, continuing and taking a look at it annually, but I just don't want people to take away. The conclusion that we don't want you to take your vacation. That's definitely not the case, I'm sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Cavanagh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate, I appreciate good council member Strater bringing that up, but I would hope that. The message that comes from both the executive branch and the city council is we value work-life balance. This is just another. Tool in, in your workshop to be able to utilize should you see fit. I appreciate the opportunity to save for people's retirement. I think that, again, one of the reasons when, number of years ago, when I applied to work for the city was the retirement options that are available. I guess I kind of said on the other side of the fence on this is that I would be one that would support allowing our employees to, to take a cash payment. To be able to do something with it. Again, I guess I look at, at this year as a really unique year where families maybe aren't able to go on vacation. But instead, maybe if an employee was able to cash some of that out to buy a season pass to Bogus Basin or Roaring Spring for their kids or. Purchase a new tent to be able to go on a camping trip, giving our employees those options as well. So I think those are some of the things that I'd like to have a more robust conversation. Maybe next year, when we have a good understanding about how this program is being utilized.
Counsel, do I have a general viewpoint that this is something that you are supportive of moving forward?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, then we will go ahead and I'll, I'll work with Todd and Crystal. And maybe just explore a little bit more about how that looks for this year and FY '22. What makes sense and then bring it back under Todd's timeframe.
Great.
Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to next item on the agenda, which is the finance department quarterly update and turn this over to Mr. Lavoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me go and get the screen shared for you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good to see you guys. I did provide this presentation to you last week for early access. So if you guys have questions, please, please. Engage myself and yourselves during this presentation. early access, so if you guys have questions, please, please engage myself and yourselves during this presentation. We want to answer all the questions that we can for you regarding the data that's presented to you. Today's information is your fiscal year 2020 budget to actual and review, basically. This is instead of going through an official audit reports. This is going to kind of take place and replace the presentation from an audit report. This gives you the results of the fiscal 2020 data. The audit reports have been delivered to your inboxes in paper form. The presentation or the actual audit report will be on, I think it's next week's or two weeks from now will be on the consent agenda for acceptance and approval. The audit report will be available online as well. So there's plenty of places where you can access the data and the content. But this presentation here is a summary of the budget to actual results for fiscal 2020. Will let you know what the results look like for your fund balances. Per our annual requirements, we do provide you a separate report on impact fee. We want to present to you the revenues and expenses collected just on the impact fee fund itself. And then I'll explain to you or inform you about what's coming up next in the quarterly update for June, May-June timeframe. And then stand for any questions, but again, please engage anytime between now and the end, you don't have to say your questions for the end, please engage each other and myself. So with that, that is the agenda. What we'll do is we'll split this presentation into two pieces, one's called governmental funds and, or general fund is what you're probably more comfortable with, and the other one's called the enterprise funds or business type activities. So we will split it up into two sections. First, we'll do the general funds or the governmental funds. And then we'll talk about the enterprise fund afterwards. So we'll start off with revenues first. As a whole, for the entire general fund, we actually ended up the year 7% higher than budgeted. What we have here are some of the larger revenue sources by independent, by their, by themselves, but as a whole, they finished the year 7%. Largest percentage difference you can see is all the way to the right at 229%. And that's primarily due to investment income. We went very conservative during COVID. We weren't certain what was going to happen with the markets. So we went super conservative on our investment interest income projections, and it just came in twice as high as we thought. I mean, the market did amazing last year. So that's what that is. It's percent is it's huge from a dollar value. It's not very big. You can see it's not, but that's what that is. The revenue associated to the intergovernmental that, you know, didn't quite make our mark, you know, that didn't make our 100% mark we're shooting for. This was primarily due to the grant monies that we received, but we never expended, or that we, that we received are budgeted, but we haven't gotten yet. So we got it in '21. So if you put the two years together, we'll, we'll have the revenue sources, but there is a delay in the actual collection of grant revenues, CARES Act, all that stuff. That's, we put the budget in, but we didn't collect all the dollars as we expected. So that's why we didn't quite meet our number there. Licenses and permits. You'll see trend on this one and some other slides. This is building permits. Those are those development agreements that you see every week that you approve. Again, exceeded our estimates. We, we went pretty aggressive on our estimates, again. You guys just did deliver it more than we thought you would do. It's not a bad problem. It's, you know, we'll continue to fine tune our estimates on what we think development will do, but that's a very tough, tough one to get to 100%. It's pretty volatile, but you know, that's why that's 162% is because growth is still happening at a faster pace than we expected. And then at the end, just want to show that property taxes, this slide shows you is our probably, is our prominent revenue source. It's the most important thing we have in our, in our bucket here. We finished the year at 1.9%. Our goal is to be off 2% either side. We're usually at the 1% mark, but again, 1.9%, we were very happy with that estimate and the results there. Again, we just want to make sure we treat and respect property taxes to the best we can on all of our decisions, since it has a large component of our overall revenue. So that is the revenue results for the general funds. Now I'm going to go into the expenditure sides for the general fund. We'll do personnel, operating and capital. So first we'll start with the personnel expenses for the city, for the city's general fund. Overall, we finished at 93% of our budget. So we left 7%, you know, quote, quote, unquote, on the table. Our average is 88.9%, so we exceeded our average that we track, so that's great. Our largest percentage gap, as you can see, is with the Parks Department and they left 16.7% of their budgets. I guess on the table, and that's primarily due to COVID-19 and inability to hire and staff the necessary events in the Parks needs during fiscal 2020. If that did not occur, they would have been most likely in the 94, 95% range. Again, COVID hurt them pretty bad. The largest dollar value gap is associated to the Police Department at $1.4 million. And that's due to their, you know, hiring practice, takes a while to hire. We understand that they have some leftover there, but it's primarily due to the hiring process. And they, you know, they're making the right decisions for the city and we respect the time that they take, but that represents there about a million bucks left on the table there. So that's personnel wages. Operating expenses. The general fund spent 73.7% of their overall operating budget. Our average is 82.8, so again, we did not quite make our overall. But you can see the four departments exceeded our average of 82.8. And the 73 is brought down because of the admins 49.7%. And that's a, pretty much due to the $3 million in CARES Act money that we budgeted, that we never got to spend. We spent it in '21. It's all a timing issue. So we put the money in the budget saying, yeah, we're going to spend all this CARES Act money. It's just a timing thing. We spent it in October. We spent it in November. We spent it in December. So, you know, everybody else did great. You know, this looks funny, but if you take the $3 million off that bar chart there, we're going to be closer to the 85 to 90% percentile, which is above our 82.8% average on, for the operating. There are no other, I didn't see any concerning items in the other four departments that I needed to report on. Everything else was just some projects didn't get finished, some carry forward items, but that's how operating turned out for the general fund. That gets us to capital. This is the last component of the expenditures that we'll review. Overall, we spent 38.8% of the total capital budget that you approved for us during the budget year last year. Of that, the general fund is requesting 7.8 million of the available 8.8 million left on the books, so 7.8 we're going to take in the next fiscal year. So over the two-year period, we're going to spend 13.4 of the 14.4 million that you allocated to us in fiscal '20. It's all timing. Police is the biggest, you know, difference, and that's associated to the scenario village, police station improvements and precinct construction. That's about 6.2 million of the eight, 7.8 that we needed to carry. There's some parks money in there for some parks projects. But for, for the most part, capital projects don't get finished in the fiscal year. They're always carried. In this case, we're carrying a majority of the money left on the table into the next fiscal year. So in summary, we showed you the expenses, revenues, we showed you expenses. So this is, represents the general funds as a whole. Again, revenue finished 7% higher than budgeted. And then you can see the personnel operating capital where they finished on versus actual the budgets. You know, revenue is higher than the budget, so that's a good problem. Actual expenditures are lower than the budget. That's a good problem. Again, these are all good problems to have, but our, our goal is to still get to that 100% mark to be, you know, as efficient as we can with the dollars that you give us. Again, so this is the general fund in summary, revenues versus expenses for the fiscal year 2020. So with that, what does this mean to the general fund balance? What does this mean to the reserves? What did it do? So when you add up all the revenues, you subtract all the expenses. We added 13.1 million dollars to our fund balance. I do want to remind you, up to 13.1, 8.8.4 million is already cut aside for those carry forward projects. So we, we have that there for a reason. When you add the 13.1 million to our pre-existing fund balance, you now have a new fund balance as of 9/30/2020 of $89 million. Again, this report is available to you. We provide you the fund balance report on a monthly basis per part of the financial reports. We show you the $89 million on that report. Of the 89 million, I do want to let you know that we do put the 89 million in five buckets of spending authority to an extent. We do have a category called non-spending. We have about 320 grand in that. That's money that we must hold aside for existing obligations. We can't touch that. There's, there's something already involved. And that's mostly prepaid, so we've already got the invoice. It's a prepaid, so we can't touch that. We, of the 89 million, we have $20 million in restricted. What we mean by restricted is that's primarily our impact fee fund, so as we've collected monies, we're holding it, we're saving it before we spend. We have a bunch of capital projects in line, the fire stations, the police precincts and the Discovery Park. So again, we're holding that money for a particular rea- reasons, so that 20 million's what we call restricted. Then we have committed and assigned. Between those two, we have about 20, about 22 million. Those are all like carry forward projects or assigned projects or committed projects. Those are those dollars represent, represent activities in play. We need to keep that money, so when the managers are managing the projects, they have the funds available that you've previously approved for those contracts, so that money is available to them. So when you take out all those, you know, kind of committed restricted funds, that leaves you 45.3 million dollars in what we call unassigned. Of the 45.3 million, 18.3 of that is put into our reserves, following our city reserve policy. So we have a policy that we follow and 18.3 represents that. So that gets you down to the $27 million unassigned fund balance. Questions, what do you, what are, you know, what's this $27 million for? We have a CFP that we presented to you, you know, two months ago, that shows you our 10-year plan of capital projects. Just to name off a few, what we're going to use this 27 million for, you know, about 8 million for two fire stations. Golf course improvements of about 2.5 million, community center, a little, little over a million. We have parks and parks pathways of 3.2 million. Linda Road Overpass, 2.5 million, we have earmarked for that. A ladder truck, 1.7. So again, this is all stuff in your CFP. I just thought I'd just grab a few of the items to kind of let you know that hey, the 27 million is there for a reason, and we have a 10-year CFP that explains why we have those funds available. And we have a plan to spend all those dollars over the next 10 years. These are just some of the items that I wanted to yes, inform you or remind you of that, why we have that money set aside in our fund balance. So that is the general fund report, again, revenues, expenses, change the fund balance, fund balance distribution and what we plan on using those funds for. So that's your fiscal year 2020, general fund audit report, financial report in review. Again, if you have questions, feel free to engage. If you want to see them for later, I'm good with that. With that, we'll jump into what we call our enterprise fund or business activities fund. This is primary water sewer engineering utility billing. We'll treat this, just like the general fund, we'll start with revenues. Revenues ended 7.8% higher as a whole for the enterprise fund. So again, pretty close to the 100% mark, which we're happy about. We ended up higher, which is always, always a good problem. The water and sewer sales, again, we didn't quite make the 100% mark, so we're going to analyze that data, see why we didn't make the 100% mark. Do we need to adjust our projections? So again, we'll look at that, you know, our goals to be right around that 100% mark. We're only off by 1.6%, one of them, not bad. Development, which is influencing the water assessment and sewer assessment, those are those hookup fees or those new assessment fees. And they're a little bit higher than our projected, it's based on development. Again, you exceeded some of our estimates on what we thought was going to happen. So that's what that represents. Again, we'll continue to look at the projections. The other revenue is interest on income of investments. Again, we went super conservative and we exceeded our investment income, and that's what that is primarily made of. Let's see what else we have here. Just want to note that water sales and sewer sales make up the majority of the revenue in this fund. Assessment fees are cyclical with development, so as development slows down, that revenue goes down as as that revenue or growth goes up, that revenue goes up. So the most consistent and most important revenue to us is the water sales and sewer sales. We need to really manage those accordingly. So those, that's revenue in, in summary. We'll go personnel, operating and capital, just like we did with the general fund. For the year, fiscal year 20, the enterprise fund ended up spending 91.9% of its entire budget, so you they spent all but, what, 8.1% of what you allocated to them, so that's awesome. Their average is 89.7, so they exceeded, all four divisions exceeded the, our standard average that we've been tracking. All departments, again, peer-to-average, over average, and the variances are most likely due to vacancies. You know, they, they're not, we're not always running at 100% budgets of staffing. So again, that's why most likely all these variances are for, it's just, there's times in the year where we don't have 100% staffing. I did not find any concerns on the personnel expenses that, when we reviewed them with the auditors. That moves us to the operating expense. For the year fiscal '20, the enterprise fund ended up spending 70.9% as a whole. Our average is 80.4, so we're 10% below our average. As you see, the largest primary percentage gap was associated to our Public Works Department. They spent 55.2%. So they left about $460,000 on the table. Of that 460, they did ask us to carry 236,000 into the next fiscal year. So those are projects that did not get finished, so we'll move 200, we'll carry 236 of that into fiscal '21. And then the luck, next largest percentage and dollar variance is in the wastewater division. They have asked us to carry over $249,000 into next fiscal year for unfinished projects. But they also had $1 million worth of CARES Act budget. Again, just like the other issues, we got the budget, we put the budget in our books, but we never expended it. Most likely it got expended in October, November, December. So that was the majority of why that wastewater is out of balance is due to the CARES Act funding. That leads us to the capital side of the enterprise fund. They ended up spending it on, for the whole 63.8%. Which is about $8 million they left on the table. Of the $8 million or the difference between of the 27%, they're asking us to carry 7.7 of the 8 million into next fiscal year. So again, for 99, 98% of the budget will be spent between the two fiscal years, between fiscal year 20 and 21. Just like the general fund, all capital projects can't get done in a fiscal year, so we do carry the funds into the next fiscal year, so the enterprise fund can complete them. So in summary, we talked about the revenues, the expenses. As you can see, revenues ended 7% higher than budget. The other three categories all ended up actuals below budget. Again, good problems to have. Our goal is to be 100%. We'll continue to tweak our operating capital personnel estimates with the revenues. We want to make sure when we're standing in front of you every June, that this is, these are the dollars that we need, that we actually, you know, can execute those dollars to the hundred, to the closest to 100% that we can. So with that, we've talked about revenues. Talked about the expenses, so when you add up all the revenues and subtract all the expenses, the impact to the enterprise fund was we added $15 million to the enterprise fund for fiscal year 2020. When you add that to the previous fund balance, you now have a fund balance as of 9/30/2020 or fiscal year end 2020 of $63.7 million. Again, this information is conveyed to you on our monthly financial reports on page two. Again, this information is conveyed to you on our monthly financial reports on page two. Uh, this is an increase of fifteen million. Uh, the enterprise fund has uh eight point four million. That's the carry forward number that we talked to you about earlier. So eight point four of that uh sixty-three million is as, is assigned to carry forward items, which leaves you fifty-five point three million in what we call unassigned. Of the fifty-five point three, uh fifteen point seven is meeting our reserve policy. So we have that uh following our city financial reserve policy. So fifteen point seven is reserved, which leaves you thirty-nine point five million dollars of unassigned monies. These dollars are identified in our CFP in their identified, but we can't commit or contract with them yet because they're on a ten-year seat, you know, they're, they're within our ten-year CFP plan. Uh, the projects are listed in the CFP accordingly. And you can uh refer to that document if you want to see exactly what projects are uh, I guess, identified to utilize that remaining uh thirty-nine point five million dollars. So that is the change to fund balance for the enterprise fund. So again, both funds had a positive uh increase to their fund balance year over year. Again, please uh let me know if you have any questions on either of those funds uh anytime. Following our agenda that gets us to the impact fees, uh, we do need to report to you on an annual basis what our impact fee results are uh for the fiscal year twenty twenty. What you have here are the revenue results by department. So each of the three departments that we collect funds for, uh, fire, parks and police, they both exceeded our uh estimates. Again, this goes in line with all the development projections. You've exceeded, you approved more permits than we thought you would. Um, so the results are showing higher than what we expected. Um, so again, for all three funds or three departments, we ended the year twenty-four point seven percent higher than what we budgeted. So you exceeded our expectations by twenty-four point seven percent on average over the three. I'm going to go over the fire, parks and police individually. This is the fire department. This is the results. You generated um forty-seven percent more revenue than we expected and that we almost spent one hundred, we spent ninety-three point five percent of the expenses all associated to station six. So again, we always got that hundred percent mark, but station six is done. So again, now we're saving up for seven and eight, but that's what uh this tile represents is the station six. That moves us on to the uh parks department. Again, parks department, uh, we collected twelve percent more than we thought. Uh, we spent only forty-four percent of our capital budgets. We're carrying all of it forward to fiscal twenty-one. Uh, so we can continue the development of those project requests. And then the police department, we collected sixty-two percent more in revenue than we thought. Again, big gap here on the capital is mostly due to the scenario village and the precinct projects that we have in play. And we just need to hold on to the money and save before we spend. And then we'll get those dollars expended over the next uh ten years easily for those projects. So in summary, um revenues twenty-four percent higher than we thought. We don't really have operating in this uh, in this fund. This is a capital-only project, basically. So we save our monies for the infrastructure necessary to complete the capital buildings, the stations, the um uh scenario village. We spent fifty-five percent of the capital uh requests. So with that, uh, what does that do to the impact fund? So we add up all the revenues, subtract all the expenses. We added four point four million dollars to the fund balance. Uh, each fund, each department had its own impacts to the uh fund balance itself. A total impact fund now res- uh sits at about twenty point three million dollars as of nine thirty twenty twenty. Uh, but again, all those dollars are restricted. They're a, a sign. They're, they've already been uh identified for the future projects going forward, so we don't really touch that. So again, remember this twenty point three is part of that eighty-nine million dollars in the general fund that we don't want to touch for anything else other than impact fee uh uses. So that is your fiscal year twenty twenty financial report. In summary, we covered the enterprise fund, the general fund and the impact fee fund. Um, again, utter, all this data is in the auto report as well. We have all this on your open gov dashboard reports as well. Everything's there um at your fingertips. So with that, so again, recap. Talked about the twenty results, fund balance and the impact fee results. Uh, following the agenda, the next quarterly uh update will be probably in May. It's going to be mostly demographic data. This is going to assist you in your budget discussions for fiscal twenty-two. So we'll kind of give you some, some na- numbers and data to help you uh articulate the requests that we are going to present to you uh with population per capita, some sales data, contracts and what water usage. It's really there to help you have a better understanding of how we're developing the budget for twenty twenty-two. And that'll be in May. We'll be presenting with you in June, uh, so that, I think this is timely information for your discussions. Uh, and with that, I stand or sit for any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd, the the revenues exceeding projections on the impact fees is, is interesting. Does that create a I guess, should that trigger a discussion at the city council level about the rate of our impact fees? Um, I know that there's always a, a concern about making sure that we are, we are spending the impact fees to meet kind of how we've calendared things out. But that's also based on a, I guess, a projection of, of revenue that we have coming in. Twenty, twenty, almost twenty-five percent above projections seems high. I just don't know if that causes any concern from your department or from the impact fee committee about the rate of, of which impact fees are coming in.
Mr. Mayor, I, Councilman Cavanagh, that's a fair question. Uh, we discuss this um every year within our impact fee committee. Uh, we agree with you that we need to keep track of the twenty-five percent overestimish- uh, our estimates. Does it impact your fee rate? As you stated, I would say no to that. Um, this impacts your collection timeline, which so if we're collecting it faster, we could get the project done on a quicker basis. Um, because we built a ten-year CIP to collect these impact fees over ten years. So if we, instead of having something done in year seven, we can get it done in year four, that's awesome for us. Then we'll open up the impact fee study because we've now completed all the projects, right? We, we don't need any more money. Now, now let's redo this because we're four years ahead of scheduled plan. Let's recalculate based on a new CIP. And so hopefully that answers it. But yes, we analyze it on a yearly basis. We present this to you on an annual basis, so you can ask these questions. Uh, but yeah, we are always looking at this, say, are we at the right time to open it? How are we doing on timelines of our CIP?
Great, thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Paul Masraider.
Uh, similar question, but more on the property tax side. So if property tax revenue is up by one point nine percent above what we expected, what is the, it, is there a primary driver of that deviation from what we expected and what is that?
Biggest primary driver is going to be delinquent taxes being collected today. So we only add it, we provide you a hundred percent of what we believe will be collected today. If we have any in arrears uncollected, which we do, we don't have a hundred percent collected. Uh, those late payments, quote unquote, are delinquent. That's what's bringing up the difference.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? Okay, Mr. Lloyd, thank you very much. I appreciate the information. Um, and the ongoing financial conversations that, as we head into this FY twenty-two budget cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the time.
Counsel, uh, next up is item twenty on our agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we go in, uh, into executive session prior to code seven four dash two zero six one B and seven four dash two zero six one D.
Mr. Mayor, second motion?
I have a motion as, and a second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? If not, court could call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
Row.
Hi.
Strater.
Hi.
Ogden.
Hi.
Burton.
All eyes, and we are moved into executive session.
Maybe I lost audio, am I the only one?
I'm not hearing anything.
Joe, maybe you know, I just couldn't figure out if we're ending our old meeting now or we're waiting till six or what are...
Yeah, we should adjourn now. I didn't hear them say anything though. They're all walking around.
Councilwoman Strater? This is Chris. We did adjourn. I didn't have chambers unmuted because it went so fast, but you were there and we did motion to come out and adjourn. So we're just in chambers right now until six. Sorry about that.
No prob. Thanks.
There you have it.
Councilman Cavanagh? Councilman Cavanagh? Council, we'll call this meeting to order for the record. It is February 23rd, 2021 at 6:01 PM. We will begin this evening's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borden? Councilman Cavanagh? Councilwoman Perro? Councilwoman Strater? Councilman Hoagland? Councilman Burnt? Mayor Simison?
Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is our Communion invocation, which will be led by Pastor David Snyder of 268 Church. Pastor Snyder, if you would mind come forward and for those of us in the room, if you wouldn't mind joining us in the invocation or take this as a moment of silence.
First Timothy says, "First of all, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings, and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life, godly and dignified in every way." Father, we pray today to you because you are the God who gives us peace and a quiet life, who brings peace over cities and nations, and you have granted us that favor in this city. We pray tonight that you would give wisdom to all who sit in positions with influence and authority for Mayor Simison, for the council members. Lord, we pray for our police, for our firemen especially, Lord, and ushering in a new fire chief tonight. We believe, Lord, that you have granted these people these positions for our good. So we pray that you would give them wisdom and strength to execute their office well. We pray that this city would continue to grow and it would be a place people want to come because of the righteousness and the peace that is present here, and we bless you for this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody inside up under the plaque form?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Oh, I skipped, sorry. Next up is adoption of the agenda anyways.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burnt?
Like to add an item to the agenda this evening, item three. Other than item three, everything looks good to go. With that, I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh?
Sorry, just I guess from a process standpoint, do we need to identify what that amended item is going to be now?
I believe it was on the posted amended agenda, so it should already be there. Okay, so Councilman Burnt, if you just wanted to...
Sure, so that item, item three, that we've added to the agenda is a potential annexation impact due to property taxes, proposed property taxes changes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is there any discussion? If not, all favors signified by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to and the agenda is adopted. There's nothing in the public forum, so we'll move on to item one under Department Commission Reports, which is the appointment swearing in of Christopher Bloom as the Chief of Meridian Fire Department. With that, I'll go down to the podium. They've given me some nice words to say so I don't go too long or don't screw things up. So we'll try to be expeditious in tonight's activities so none of you miss out in case a call comes in. But welcome to everyone. Thank you for the wonderful turnout for tonight's activities of swearing in Christopher Bloom as the next fire chief for the city of Meridian. The only real things I want to say before I just get to the bio and get to the status point is I'm excited for today and I hope the men and women of the Meridian Fire Department are also excited today. With new leadership comes new opportunities, new challenges. And trust me, we've got plenty of challenges as a city, but I see nothing but opportunities here for our fire department as we move forward. So very excited for today and hopefully you will be too. So with that, let me just do a quick reading of the bio, so it's in the record, so everyone hears from that standpoint. Chris Bloom, originally from Idaho, comes to the city of Meridian and the Meridian Fire Department with 21 years' experience with Tucson Fire. He will leave his role as Battalion Chief of the Special Operations Division, one of the Tucson Fire Department's highest ranking leadership positions to lead the Meridian Fire Department. Chief Bloom's experience includes administrative and operational assignments, as well as leadership roles in wildland fire, emergency management, paramedicine, hazardous materials, technical rescue and community risk reduction. Chris is a current instructor for the National Fire Academy here in times of need. Chris is a consecutive fire officer graduate, author and speaker focused on values-driven, mission-focussed leadership for the fire service. We welcome Chief Chris Bloom to the Meridian Fire Department and the city of Meridian. We look forward to his leadership and working together to serve the great community of Meridian. With that, Chief, or Chris Bloom, almost, if you would come forward to take the oath of office. With that, if you'd like to raise your right hand, I state your name.
I, Chris Bloom.
Do hereby declare.
Do hereby declare.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Idaho and that.
And the state of Idaho and that.
I will faithfully discharge my duties as fire chief.
I will faithfully execute my duties as fire chief.
For the Meridian Fire Department.
For the Meridian Fire Department.
And for the citizens of Meridian.
And for the citizens of Meridian.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I promise to.
I promise to.
Protect and enhance our community.
Protect and enhance our community.
Through professionalism and compassion.
Through professionalism and compassion.
In accordance with the Meridian Fire Departments.
In accordance with the Meridian Fire Departments.
Guiding principles and policies.
Guiding principles and policies.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I'd now like to invite Chief Bloom's wife Catherine and son Wyatt to come forward for the penning of the badge. Technically, there is a technicality that we're going to have to do. I will go ahead and offer Chief Bloom to say a few words to address council prior to their appointment officially.
Well, thank you to the Meridian City Council, Mayor Simison, the Meridian Fire Department, the city of Meridian, and my family that was able to be here this evening. My family and I could not be more happy to be home. While my face is new to the community, it is not new to the fire service. In my 21 years in this profession, I have learned the value of public service and more specifically, that of public safety. It truly is a calling, and in my opinion, it's the highest of callings. Those in the fire service understand the mantle of responsibility that is associated with sending men and women into harm's way to save, serve and protect others. As fire chief, I believe that it is my responsibility to protect those that protect all of us. As to the men and women of the Meridian Fire Department, your safety, their safety and their well-being is at the forefront of the decisions I intend to make and support. They will also expect and be given honest, transparent communication internally as well as externally with our partners in the Treasure Valley. To the Meridian community and the Treasure Valley partners, Meridian Fire Department exists to serve the community. My vision for Meridian Fire Department is to continue to provide exceptional service. We will continue to be a progressive fire service organization that seeks best practices to meet the evolving needs of the community in a safe and ethically responsible manner. The opportunity to lead and serve this incredible organization is inspiring and I could not be more proud. As I leave here this evening, I am honored, I'm humbled and I'm excited to get to work.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Strater, I think if we can take care of some business first real quick. Okay, if you're there to make a motion, absolutely.
Super, I am. Mr. Mayor, I move that we confirm Christopher Bloom as the new chief of the Meridian Fire Department.
Councilman Hoagland?
I second that motion.
I have a motion of second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden?
Absolutely.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Perro?
Aye.
Strater?
Aye, and welcome.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Burnt?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. You are officially appointed, and I almost like it doing it better this way. Make the speech and make your case. So congratulations once again. Council, with that, I'm going to call a five-minute recess just to allow us to reset. There are some refreshments in the lobby for those that are here, but so we can do a couple of pictures, administrative duties, we'll reconvene and try to be back at 6:20. Thank you. Thank you. Counsel. All right, counsel. We'll go ahead and come on back from recess. Next item on the agenda is item two, the collective labor agreement between the city of Meridian and the Meridian firefighters, IAFF, Local 4627. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Roundtree.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nair.
Sir, members of council, as Tyler's coming up, I do want to point out that we had a couple of little errors that were not substantive error or not errors. A couple of tweaks, words got left off, a few minor things. I've sent you that version. That is the version Chris had. I did speak with the union's council today. We both are in agreement. These are necessary but not substantive, so we can move forward with this agreement as it's being presented.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, super glad to be here tonight, to be in front of you with the contract that is finished. So I'm always been or always have been reminded that hard work sometimes takes some time, and I think this document is a good representation of that theory. We did take the bait early on when the mayor asked us to have the contract done in 30 days. This crazy thing of COVID came into play, and we kind of adapted and overcame that. And then even more crazy was our chief being hired away by Boise. So it was a lot of work. Publicly, I would like to thank committee chair Captain Brock Clapp, Captain Tony Chance, Captain Scott Warren, and working out of class Captain Jaren Jones. Those guys stuck through this from start to finish. As a local, we've been working on it over a year. But again, the end product is very good. I'm always impressed that as a group, we always work together and we always find resolve. That doesn't mean that sometimes the meetings don't get a little spicy, but we do find common ground. We walk away, and everybody has good things to say about one another when it's all over. So I'm excited to report at our virtual meeting last night, out of 69 people that attended that meeting, out of the 78 members that I represent, it was unanimous that it be passed. And I can speak on behalf of our council. That's pretty rare. And she was elated to see that the membership was very happy. So I could stand here a long time and thank the people on the city side that have been involved in this process. Every single person in HR, finance, payroll, city legal. There's been a lot of work, and it is greatly appreciated by this local. We very much value the relationship that we have with each and every one of you. And as we do this, we tend to lose sight of the big picture. And the big picture is the day like today, bringing a chief in and having a good turnout in a COVID time to be very supportive of this department. We don't get to come in here every week and tell you thank you for what you do, not only for us, but the city as a whole. We certainly appreciate your dedication to us, and we appreciate the dedication that each of you have to the city of Meridian. With that, I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Roundtree or Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Mr. Roundtree. Tyler, you know, you nailed the hammer on the head. I completely agree 100% with what you just said. During these discussions, especially, you know, these negotiations, it got hairy once or twice, maybe three times max. Sometimes we'd laugh, scratching our heads, wondering what the other party was doing or what their approach was. But the good thing about what we do here at the city of Meridian, and that includes the fire department and the union, is that we do find common ground. And at the end of the day, there's a level of trust that we both want the same thing. The end result is the same. And I want to thank you. I want to thank your leadership. Captain Chance is here in the audience, Mr. Winkler. I want to thank your local and know that we appreciate all that you guys do. So thank you so much, and two or three more years, we'll have this discussion again.
We did go for a three-year, which is big. So for me, that'll be a year from my rule of 80. So that's always good, but yeah, it's good. Certainly, I think we listened to a few of the things that the city and city council wanted to see, and we were able to find that common ground and get it into a contract. It's great.
Mr. Mayor.
One last thing. I don't mean to cut, and I want to thank, I don't mean to cut off Councilman Hoglan, but I want to thank Councilman Hoglan, honestly, because so much time went into this with you and vacation time, and I don't know how many different times I went to you and asked for a little, if you needed a little help, and you were adamant that you wanted to take care of business, and so negotiations are, especially this set of negotiate, was long, and you were there from the beginning to the end, and I just want to say thank you. And at the end, Councilwoman Schrader came in and helped out as well, staff, and thank you so much, Bill and your team. So I wanted to say thank you to Councilman Hoglan, because all the time you put into this, it was a big deal.
Councilman Hoglan.
Mr. Mayor, well, thank you for those kind words, Councilman Burnt. Appreciate that. And I just appreciate the work of the firefighters' local leadership. Tyler, you and your team, your engagement, how diligent you were in that, the back and forth and seeing this through. I'm sure there was more than one time, I know on both sides, you probably thought, is this really worth it? You know, building this step plan that I think is going to be very good for firefighters as they choose this as their career path and for the city and the taxpayers, having the financial certainty, being able to see and build to what is coming down the road. I think it's going to be a very good thing for all parties. And, you know, some people think union contract negotiations are confrontational, and for our community, that is not the case. We've got people on both sides who live in this community, want the very best for this community. You know, it's a time that we look at processes and procedures and how they're handled. We look at what are the equipment needs? Do changes need to be made? What's the fair market value for the work? And then we just have to work through there. There's comparisons, there's research, and in the end, we finally come to that agreement that's workable for both sides, and we appreciate that. I think the fun thing is about this is that there is trust that the word is good, that what your leadership team was saying was true. And the only thing that we had to do was, because the lawyers made us, is write it down. So we, but that's how great relationships work, because we're all invested in Meridian, making it a better place. We know our firefighters are here to serve the citizens in this great community. And besides, you just never know when you sit down in a barber shop chair and the union president might be right next to you. So that's, you know, that's how it works, and we really appreciate the diligence that you guys put into it. And I look forward to the next three years, and I think it's great that here we are tonight, ratifying this contract, and Chief Bloom is on board, and we look forward to some great things for our firefighting team out there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I echo the same comments, and I know I came in kind of at the end, but I really appreciate Councilmember Hoglan as well for a special thank you on behalf of city council for the many months that he stuck with this. And thank you to the local, the legal team, the finance team. Any good agreement, I think there's a level of compromise. No one is going to get everything that they want, but I think this is fair, and I think that it'll hopefully stand the test of time for a few years. So congratulations, Tyler, on getting to this point, and to everybody else.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kepner.
Couple of comments if I may. First, it is a great day to be in Meridian. It's great to have a new fire chief. It's great to have this contract before us. I do want to echo the thanks to our city employees, our finance employees, our HR employees, and most importantly, our fire employees. I recognize this is a contract, one that I heard at times, while the conversations may have got a little squirrely. It's all because we're all passionate. I know that our fire employees are passionate for each other and for serving in our community, just like our finance or HR and the city council. Councilmember Hoglan hit the nail on the head, is that I really believe that when city council and city attorney or whoever is sitting across from members of the local, there's respect, that the information that they're sharing to us is straightforward, that you're honest brokers. And I don't think that that type of a culture happens by accident. That's been built by previous city councils, previous union representatives, and I just want to thank all the parties who came together to continue that. I think it's important, while we get three years, that we continue to converse about the issues, not confront each other about the issues, and continue to work together for our employees and for our citizens. And I think that's something really remarkable that makes me very proud to serve this city, and I want to thank all of you for helping to make this a reality.
Any other council members? Okay, well, I will just add to my thank you to everybody and congratulations on both sides of it and to the point. I mean, not only this, we can really focus on moving forward at this point in time. Think about a gift to your new chief, quite frankly. You come in, you don't have to worry about this. You can focus on what we need to now do as a department for the long term, for the next three years, where this doesn't have to become the focus of the conversation. So thank you for that gift to him. Appreciate everyone's commitment to getting to this point in time. And thank you for all the time that everyone did and for allowing me to, on occasion, pop in and sit in when I had those hours on the Zoom call. I enjoyed the conversation. I enjoyed listening to it. I did think it was productive, even sometimes when it maybe got squirrely, but I really valued that. So with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I will make a motion and dedicate it to Councilman Hoglan. I move that we approve the collective labor agreement between the city of Meridian and the Meridian firefighters, Local 4627.
Councilman Burnt.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Gaviner.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hoglan.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
And as Councilman Borden liked to remind me during the negotiations, I don't have a vote, but I do have a voice. Aye. So it's all ayes, motion carries. The agreement is agreed to once I sign it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
With that, counsel, we will move on to action items. Item three, which was added to the agenda, the proposed amended or the potential annexation impacts to propose property tax changes. And I will turn this over to Councilman Burnt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to raise an issue for consideration before council and the mayor before we hear from the applicants this evening. As we all know, the Idaho State Legislature is considering a variety of different options of tax reform that will impact the city of Meridian directly in how we provide future services with growth or with changes to the growth that has already been approved. Recently, the city of Meridian sent a letter to Chairman Rice and the Senate Local Government and Taxation Committee in opposition to Senate Bill 1108. For those who are listening this evening, I would like to highlight some of the important talking points in that letter. Senate Bill 1108 will substantially impact our service levels and limit our ability to keep up with growth needs. Meridian has done well by proactively saving before we spend for critical services and large-scale projects. This type of planning has allowed us to remain a debt-free city, completing multimillion-dollar projects like building and opening Meridian Fire Station 6 this past year. Through these practices, we have maintained the service levels our community expects and deserves. We have identified the need of 13 police officers, 24 firefighters, and we have plans for two fire stations and two police precincts for our community in the next four years. These two proposed fire stations and police precincts will be located in the northwest and southeast areas of our city. These arbitrary budget caps proposed by Senate Bill 1108 have an anticipated impact of nearly $17 million over the next eight years, which will impact our ability to provide these needed services. The result would be longer response times due to the location of services and increased calls of The result would be longer response times due to the location of services and increased calls of service. By only allowing an arbitrary percentage to be collected, this bill would transfer the cost of services to existing homeowners or would require a reduction to the level of service to our residents. Most importantly, when Idahoans were asked objectively about the issue of property taxes in the recently released 2021 Idaho Public Policy Survey conducted by Boise State University, respondents were not concerned about the cost of their taxes from local government. What they were concerned about is unpredictability of taxes due to increasing home values. Senate Bill 1108 does nothing to address this issue. With that said, I propose that we caution applicants that we will, excuse me. With that said, I propose that we caution applicants that will likely delay and/or continue hearings for the next six weeks until we have further information from the legislature and have time to analyze any impacts that legislation may have on our ability to provide services. This proposed delay would exclude any infill development of five acres or less. Because of the unknowns going forward regarding Senate Bill 1108 and how it could dramatically affect our city and our city levels, I believe the only prudent action is to take a pause. To those that represent Meridian in the state legislature, please know that the city of Meridian and this body desire to be part of the solution. I would like to turn the time over to Mayor Simison for his thoughts. After, I would like to open it up for discussion amongst council members so that we can provide direction to staff and to the development community going forward. Mayor Simison.
Thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate you bringing this up for our conversation today. And I agree that it's necessary to consider the impacts of current legislative actions and continue annexation requests for our community until we know the full impacts of these legislative efforts. You know, when we approve annexation, we are making a contract with the property owner that we will provide services to them when that time comes. As a city, we also have service expectations. If funding changes and we are not able to provide the services at these levels or those levels that our future residents expect, is it even fair to enter into the agreements for annexation? Our residents have said that growth should pay for growth, not that growth should pay 75% of their costs and let the existing taxpayers pick up the rest of the cost. I believe if enacted, ultimately, this bill will require the city to look at growth differently as certain types of development traditionally don't have as much impact on our services. Unfortunately, when you take that into consideration, this can create winners and losers in development rather than providing for a mix of development to meet the variety of needs of our residents. To me, it's imperative that the approval of growth provide the revenue necessary for servicing that growth. Taking away necessary revenues, which cover service costs, just shifts the burden into other taxing categories. Ultimately, as Council President Burnt said, we want to be working with our legislators to find long-lasting improvements to the taxing system, not picking and choosing specific areas that suffer to the benefit of other taxing revenues. Representative John Vanderwood had touched on the need to understand the broad tax system and how changes impact the whole system during the November 19th, 2020 Working Group on Property Tax. And we said, until we can look at and compare the numbers, we really can't make good legislation in regard to how property tax is spent. Well, to me, the same can be said for our processes here. Until we can understand the numbers, we really can't make good land use decisions in regards to how services will be provided. So I'm in support of making sure we have a clear understanding of what our current situation is. I mean, the unfortunate part of this is this, if this legislation gets enacted, it really impacts the last five years of development, which has been approved. You know, it's, that's, we're going to see that from what we expected. But for us in good, in all good conscience, to move forward with the same assumptions when approving new things, which we, that could have similar impacts, I think we just need to make sure we have a clear understanding to the best of our ability. And when there's an active conversation going on at the legislature until that is resolved, is it really prudent for us to move forward? So I'll turn my time back over to you, Councilmember.
I've spoke a little bit this evening about this, and so I might chime in toward the end. I like to listen to what this body has to say in regard to this proposal and the good, the bad, the ugly. I think it's important that we get it all out. Most importantly, I believe it's important that we're fair partners with our stakeholders and that they know what to expect going forward as well. With that said, I'll just open it up to the body to have a discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I view this as an unfortunate, talk about coming off the great night we've been having. It's an unfortunate, but I am convinced necessary for us to take this pause because I think we all have the philosophy, you know, new growth should pay for itself. And under this bill, I believe that new growth will not be paying its fair share. Any kind of new construction or annexation, only getting a partial percentage of those property taxes makes it so that every penny that existing residents have paid now is going to be diluted. The existing residents of Meridian are going to have a diluted level of city services because of growth. And that, to me, is not acceptable. So I couldn't agree more that this makes sense to take a pause for six weeks while we work with our legislative partners and try to really understand what this would mean for the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Mr. Mayor, Council President Burnt, I thank you so much for helping to facilitate this good conversation. Councilwoman Schrader was correct. Like, boy, we started tonight's meeting on a real high with a lot to celebrate. And this is a challenging conversation. I'd like to offer at least a contrarian view for consideration. I guess I believe that we have an obligation as a city council to hear each annexation on its own individual merits. And I think you look at tonight's agenda as a really great example. We've got like a three-quarter of an acre annexation where an individual is trying to connect to city services and 125 acre annexation project that would bring a significant amount of new homes to kind of our West Philly border. They each have their own merits and they need to be judged as such. I'm a little hesitant. In fact, I'm very gun shy to move forward with a blanket. We aren't going to discuss, we're going to continue any new annexation for six weeks. For, I think, for one simple reason. What happens if this legislation passes and we find ourselves in this scenario six weeks from now? Are we then going to make the decision that we're going just to blanketly deny all annexations? I don't think that's the case. At least I hope that's not the case. So I would offer, I guess, a modified point of view that I think is worth considering, which is that we continue to take every application on on its own merits, recognizing that the decisions that the legislature are, that are playing out right now, that may have an impact. And it may have an impact on one application over another. I fear that we're setting bad precedent by drawing a line in the sand and saying that we aren't going to discuss any annexations for the next six weeks. So I greatly, greatly appreciate the intent and really thank our mayor and our council president for starting this conversation. I think that we've got a really good opportunity to communicate to our customers about where the city of Meridian is in terms of annexation so that they go into this eyes wide open. But I'm not sold that we need to put the close side up out front.
Thank you, Councilman Kavner. And just, I think, for a little bit of perspective, people will still be able to apply and they will still be able to schedule their hearings and they will still be able to move things forward to the best of their ability. You know, they have a right to do that and we are not infringing upon anybody's right to do that. And as far as how applications would be processed or what the will of the council is, that's what this conversation is for. But we would not be telling anybody they do not have the right to submit and try to move forward their application.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I have a question for Councilman Burnt, if you would yield. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, I think when you opened up this conversation, I heard you say that infill property less than five acres would be exempt from this.
Yes, sir.
So that would, for the one application that's up tonight, that's an acre, which makes sense because they're already typically receiving city services or are in the area that city service is already there. They don't have to be extended. They're already receiving police and fire protection services. Now they're just coming onto the tax rolls and being part of the city and being counted that way. So I like that approach in particular.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I've been closely tracking what's happening with the legislature. Being a member of our residential real estate community, significantly involved in, as a profession in residential real estate and the decisions that are made at the legislative level not only affect us as decision makers in the city, but significantly affect all the residents of our community, current and new, and those who are hoping to come in the future. And so this has been heavy on my mind for a while now. And I'm disheartened that we have to be here making this decision at all. Truly, making me emotional. However, and the points made by my fellow council members are taken very well. I appreciate both Councilwoman Schrader and Councilman Kavner representing the two sides of this conversation because I think that those are both very significant pieces of this. And I would say, it's my understanding of the intention of this suggestion by Council President Burnt is that we would have some more indication of actual numbers. We might be able to run some actual numbers once a decision is made based on what we know in the city of Meridian and what our expenses would be. And that's where the difference would be, Councilman Kavner, would be that we could then at that point make a decision about how we proceed because we will actually know what the bill's effects will be. If it gets passed, at this point, everything is conjecture. As far as, you know, there's been three revisions of these property tax bills, just this legislative session, not including what was discussed last year. So I think the intention is with this pause, which, you know, still is a bit uncomfortable for me, but I understand the purpose behind it and truly six weeks is not that significant of a time if it means that we get an opportunity to better prepare for the bigger decisions that are potentially ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I see it unfortunately, simple, in the sense that we've got an unwavering conviction to these core service levels. If you've got a bill as proposed, if this thing passes, we know the fiscal impact now. Councilmember Burnt said it squarely that it's a seven-figure compounding impact. And if you ever wanted to understand ground zero of when the city's fiscal stability and public safety levels of service, when they begin to decay, looking back at 2035, you'll look at 2021 and the decisions being made. If this thing passes, as proposed, it is crystal clear, the monumental impact. And the only thing missing is the discipline to at least take pause and see what happens. Hopefully, it doesn't pass. But if it does, it is crystal clear that there is no way we can maintain existing levels of service the way we have with the diminished revenue sources. It's just, it's simple math. Council President Burnt, I appreciate you and the mayor working to bring this forward. Extremely unfortunate that we're here having this conversation, but it's, it, to me, is really easy to focus on being fiscally responsible. I think that's our responsibility. It's why this conversation's been brought up. And we have to make difficult decisions that are right for the long term, even if in the short term, it's challenging. And that's some of the thought process that I've had about this is is avoiding that tragic pivot where we fail to recognize what the most responsible decision is. Nobody likes it, but we need to react and be able to pivot should our funding source be altered as proposed by this bill. So I know we've been, most of all of you have been in touch with our local legislators. I appreciate everyone's efforts to contact them, continually educate them, provide information. As Council President Burnt had described, the real impact and the compounding impact in light of how these funds are expended and the public safety commitments we have and the planning we've undergone. So while a pause is extremely difficult to stomach, it is certainly the fiscally prudent and responsible thing that I believe we have to do. I think as proposed, that suggestion is the right way to go. And I don't think there's any way to understate the, or overstate the importance of the magnitude of what Meridian's facing and cities around the state are facing with this particular bill. So a pause is far and away the most prudent and appropriate action that we can take.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I agree. This is a decision that we don't take lightly. It's a very serious decision. It has financial ramifications for people. But if folks had tuned in to our council workshop earlier this evening and listened to the quarterly financial report, they would see that we plan ahead. We are looking out 10 years to determine what is needed, financial impacts, what it will cost, and how do we get there in the most efficient manner possible, utilizing tax dollars. This is a community, and when I previously served on council, it was a different time, it was during a recession. But what hasn't changed, going from recession to whether it's rampant growth, is that we live within our means. And that is important. And I agree with what's been said about new growth bears a responsibility for paying its fair share. It is not fair for current existing taxpayers to pay even more because of new growth coming in. And we're going to continue to grow. And what does that do to property values? We reduce the supply if we don't approve things and the demand's still there. Hey, supply and demand takes effect and prices go up. And how does that help people with reduced property tax? It doesn't. This is not a solution. I found it ironic. I was, it was on a news story and they were talking about a debate on a particular bill in the House. And the legislator in making their case quoted Thomas Jefferson and said, "The government closest to the people serves the people best." That was their quote in support of their legislation. And I was struck by the irony of that, that here we are, the government closest to the people have no say. And we are the ones responsible. And we want to deliver in a responsible way an efficient government utilizing the least amount of taxes to make that a reality. And when you think about the constituents we represent, when we think about older folks on fixed income, like my parents, rising property taxes don't help them. My kids, starting out in their careers and a young family and just bought their first house. We don't want to have overly high property taxes. It doesn't help. So here we are as elected officials, working to find the most efficient means to deliver the services, police, fire, parks, water, sewer, the very means needed, means of survival in some ways to people at the most efficient method. And yet now, they're going to be taking away At the most efficient method, and yet now they're going to be taking away. Funding for us to do that. Like I said, this this is a serious. Issue that I don't take lightly, but it is one that we have to step back. See what the impacts are, see what happens, and then plan accordingly. And. I think Councilman Burnt, you're you're. Very timely and and wise in in coming forward with this, and I I I think that is something I can certainly support.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I know I saw Bill earlier. I know I think Alan's in the room. Do we have a ballpark of how many? Annexation requests that would fall within the the threshold created by Councilmember Burnt over the next six weeks?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I if I may.
Mr. Parsons.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, I I anticipated that question as this discussion started this evening, so I I thought ahead. So thank you for that. So look, I I do track all the projects that come in through the door or through our office just to make sure, see what we're working on. And I counted approximately five annexations that we are currently processing and they're at various stages. So some are scheduled, some haven't been scheduled. So you can anticipate at least that uptick in applications. None of them appear to be. Too controversial, but maybe one in the southeast corner of Meridian, maybe some may fall into some of that category. But all the other ones seem to be more infill or conditional use permits or like back to your point, they're smaller sized developments where. Infill type developments where they make a lot of sense, shouldn't impact anything. But like I said, on the books right now, I'm showing five annexations that we're currently processing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Then a follow up question for the body to to consider for those. For those. Annexation requests that have already been noticed to the public. What would our response be to communicating to the public? About what sounds like an intention to continue those out, which would then require a subsequent renoticing? Is that something then that the the cost the city is going to pick up? Are we going to ask the applicant to pick it up? Any any thought? I I know. I know that's somewhat in the weeds, but I I think if we're going to be having this conversation, let's make sure that we're all on the same page and. And flush this out so that we can be consistent in our messaging.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I think I think it's important to note that the the the. The current. Applications that are on the books. I don't think anyone is, I don't think this body would would ever say, especially since they've been noticed, you know, tonight or future dates. As as public hearings that we would deny their request to have a public hearing. If if they feel like they want to have a public hearing. There's no one that's going to tell them not to. They can bear that risk, and if they feel like it's in it's in their it's in their best interest to 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 continue with. Public hearings that have been scheduled, then I I welcome that that discussion. Is is as far as who bears the burden of cost of. That's 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 a that's a discussion that we needed to have. I don't have an answer to that right now at this very second.
And I think it would kind of somewhat depend upon when they came through the process and how far out. If you hear them and then you just want to continue to make your final decision. If that's a two week continuance versus a six weeks continuance depending upon which project and where it is. I think those are all somewhat individualistic questions to be answered.
So Mr. Mr. Mayor, apologies, additional question then.
Councilman Cavanagh.
And this helps me because I, as I understand, it is not a case that we are not going to hear these annexations. We will go through the. Public process, but then we'll. Continue it before we deliberate and make a decision for six weeks. Is that as I'm understanding things?
That's what my recommendation would be, yes. And and if if at the point in time council does want to take action on anyone. You have that right and that responsibility, but people can be aware that you may choose not to make a decision. Until one, two, three, four, or five weeks later. Until we know more outcomes. I mean, this could be put to bed in two weeks, for all we know.
Could be, yeah. Mr. Mayor, with that, I I think I can be supportive of that. I I may have misunderstood that it was a case that we were just going to. Continue these applications out without allowing the public to come in and testify at a time that's been noticed. Again, appreciate the intent. I may have just got hung up on the process standpoint.
Mr. Neri.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so we we've had some internal discussions about this and. Kind of where 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 does this land for staff or the commission for all that? And and our recommendation would be simply continue the process. I mean, you can still apply. Obviously, the 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 size of the project may be relevant for the planner to communicate that to the applicant that. The city council has directed. Some of these may not be decided on your hearing night. It will depend on a lot of factors. But that they can still go through the process. The only issue that I was suggesting is like for tonight's hearings. Many times, if if the decision isn't likely to be made tonight, sometimes the applicant would prefer to do it closer to when a decision is going to be made. Because they feel it's somewhat it's stale in between. Other times they're prepared. They've already prepared their documents. They've already prepared their presentation. And they'd like to make that, and you may have questions about the project anyway that need to be answered. I think he's just being upfront with with our applicants to say. We may not be making a decision on this and we may be continuing it out for a month to six weeks, depending on these other factors. I think provides them the opportunity. If they say, hey, we'd rather just wait and hear it all at once. That's their call. If they'd rather say, well, we'll present it in case you have questions or concerns, maybe in the interim, we can answer those questions. So it doesn't take even longer than that.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, just kind of chime in on some timelines here, looking at the spreadsheet. So a lot of the projects that I reference start. Before planning and zoning in mid-March and potentially even starting in the beginning of April. So by the time it got to this body, we're talking sometime. End of April. Beginning of April, which would be right around that six week timeframe if you were to give us that direction as of this evening. So I think that may give you guys enough time to kind of have this pause as you're discussing this evening and then. As we start coming towards you and and presenting these projects to you, I think. I think this body would probably have know what that direction would be by that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
For noticing, I just want to point out for city council, we have noticed five hearings in the next several weeks of that have an annexation component to them. So they've come out of planning and zoning and are coming to council, and we've noticed those. So it's just five.
So so council, there's there's no action that needs to be taken at this point in time. This was just discussion purposes, but I think it does for those in the development community or those seeking action. It gives them. A heads up. Yeah, I think that as we move forward, you and you, as things come forward. The council will have to make that decision whether not to continue if they think it has enough of an impact, either from the parameters that have been established or otherwise. You know, you you could have a pretty significant, I'm not going to say we do, but you could have a. Two acre infill project that's 24 stories and, you know, that can have a severe impact. So I think to that point, you have to look at everything even within the the lens of what's out there. Any final comments, Councilmember?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I I appreciate this deliberation this evening. I appreciate this body and the the thought that's gone into this discussion. I I was lucky enough to be invited to go to the legislature, the committee meeting that was held. By by Chairman Rice and the Senate Local Government and Taxation Committee last Thursday, and I heard time and time again. Asking. Local governments to do more with less. And I've I'm not an old pro, you know, sitting in the seat there. There are definitely others who have been sitting in these seats far longer than myself. But I can I can reassure. Each and every citizen. In Meridian that we've been doing more with less for decades. This isn't something that just. I think. Councilmember Hoagland said, this isn't anything new to us. We're old pros at doing. Doing more with less. We're we're we could teach books on it. So if there are any legislators out there who have questions. About what we do. My door is always open. There is not a member on this body that would love to sit down and educate and inform how we do things here in the city of Meridian. Sometimes as as. As elected officials, we're the ones that pontificate the most. But at the end of the day, it's our city staff that step up and do the job. So. Legislators. More than welcome to reach out to our city staff as well. We'd love to talk to you, so. We're lucky to have good legislators, honestly. I just hope that we can. Do this together and be partners at the table. So just does a does a staff have any questions for us this evening?
Mayor, members of the council, I I just we just asked for clear direction and certainly I've heard you this evening. If we'll have those conversations with our partners, community partners, as we prehab with them and just let them know. What's occurring and and we'll go again, we'll accept applications just like Mr. Neri had testified and. Let them know that things, there's a potential that things could get delayed at some date, but don't know if that's going to happen or not. So if that's okay with the council, if that's if I heard you correctly this evening, we'll proceed with that direction.
Okay. Any any questions, any more questions from the body?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to tonight's agenda. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Program Year 2019 CAPR. I will open this public hearing with staff comments and turn it over to Crystal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am here on behalf of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And I'm going to share my screen really quick with my presentation. I am here presenting our year in review for program year 19. So our program year in review, it's called a CAPR, which stands for Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. The purpose of this is to provide our annual accomplishments as well as an evaluation of our progress towards our five year goals. We also definitely want to provide transparency to the public. That's one of the biggest things with this. So our program goals are identified in the consolidated plan, that five year plan, and we use the analysis of impediments to fair housing as well as the housing market analysis. And then we also do a lot of community engagement to figure out what the public actually needs and try to meet those needs with our goals. So the goals for our current plan is to improve accessibility, enhance homeownership opportunities, provide social services, stabilize the rental gap, and to provide admin and fair housing for the grant. So to improve accessibility, we had a couple of projects that were completed. We had additional projects that we funded and worked on throughout the year, but these are just the ones that were completed. One was MDC completed construction of sidewalks to improve safety and accessibility for an estimated 1,955 residents in an LMI neighborhood. LMI is a low to moderate income neighborhood, so a certain percentage of the neighborhood is a lower or moderate income. The the number of residents is based on the census tracts of the areas that are affected, so it is just an estimate. We also had a couple of streetlights projects that Public Works took on. They ended up modernizing 49 streetlights in several different neighborhoods into completely separate areas. To improve visibility and safety for around 3,500 residents. And the Meridian Library finished up their project at the beginning of the program year. When they upgraded the main restrooms to make them ADA compliant and provide better access to an estimated thousand community members with disabilities. To address our goal of enhancing homeownership opportunities, we worked with the Ada County Housing Authority to. Work on their home buyer assistance program. We did struggle, well, ACHA struggled with finding qualified people who were able to actually get into a home. They were not able to serve any people. They had several people who qualified. But in the end, they weren't able to identify housing that was affordable to them or they were outbid so that the house that they were trying to get into is no longer affordable to them. When I looked at Realtor.com information, the median home value in Meridian right now is almost a half a million dollars, and it's an 18% increase in the past year. And the median time on the market is 41 days. So for the people we're trying to help with this, it takes a little bit of time to get through. All the different processes that are associated with our funding. So that's. A really short amount of time to try to get everything, especially when people are coming in and outbidding them. So it's been really tough. So to address this, we provided ACHA with some technical assistance to update their processes. We hired a consultant to work on it and some of the areas that they changed their. The grant amount in the past, it was just a flat $10,000 for everybody, and sometimes they would do $15,000, but basically is a flat rate. And so they are going to adjust the grant amount based on people's income level to try to bring down the cost of the housing. They are also increasing the amount that's available available to participants. Like I said, sometimes it would go up to $15,000, but now they're going to go up to $25,000. And they also are going to be more involved in the underwriting process so that they can work on buying down the principal to lower the monthly payments. For our goal of providing social services, we worked with these different agencies for the programs listed for the Boys and Girls Club. We worked with their scholarship program. Jesse Tree provided emergency rental assistance. Catch provided utility assistance. Terry Riley provided behavioral health crisis management at the Allenby House and Neighbor Works provided mortgage assistance. So this is a list of our goals compared to the outcomes. The Boys and Girls Club, they were a little bit under their goal, but they still. Served right around what they had thought they would. It was a little bit difficult for them with COVID. There was social distancing requirements, and then they were shut down at different points. So it was a little bit tough to get those scholarships out the door, but they ended up doing a really good job. Jesse Tree, they were also a little bit under, not too much though, and they spent all of their funds. But they had a lot of other funding sources, and so the other funding sources expired sooner than ours did, so they kind of prioritized those ones. Catch, they had anticipated serving eight individuals and they ended up serving. Eight households with more individuals when you count out the individuals, but HUD is counting these ones as individuals, not households. So they look really good on paper with how many they served. Terry Riley and Neighbor Works Boise, those are under the different funding source. It's under the CARES Act funds. So they have a different expiration date and their contract actually goes through March of this year, but. They have longer to spend it as long as we decide to amend it. So. Here pretty soon, we'll talk to them and see if it's working out for all parties and see if we want to amend those contracts to push them out a little bit further. Right now, Terry Riley has has served 14 individuals as of the end of this program year, and they had anticipated serving 250. So they it took a little bit to ramp up both of these programs. Terry Riley actually hired a new case manager for this position. So they had to get them on board and everything, and as far as Neighbor Works, they have served six individuals of the 66 they anticipate serving. But this was a brand new program for them, so they had a lot of a lot of work to do to get it going. So we also had a goal of stabilizing the rental gap, and when. When I read through the consolidated plan, the intent of this was to provide homelessness prevention and emergency rental assistance. Which actually falls under public services, so we don't necessarily have outcomes that are under this goal, but we still are able to report on the outcomes. For the intent, but they're just being reported under public services instead of stabilizing the rental gap. For admin fair housing, there's been a lot of subrecipient management administering the additional COVID-19 funding. working on deadlines for timeliness, reporting all of those, training, process improvements. We are also, Meridian is working with the other entitlement communities that receive CDVG to coordinate on a joint analysis of impediments to fair housing for our upcoming consolidated plan. We wanted to, instead of working in silos, we wanted to make sure that we're capturing what's happening across the Treasure Valley because all of our communities are interwoven so much that what happens to one happens to the other. So we thought that that was really important. So that's also the reason why we work together on the Fair Housing Radio Campaign that we do every April. That's with them as well. So here is our progress for our consolidated plan up to this point. We have about a year and a half left of it. For improving accessibility, our goal was originally to serve 222 individuals to improve their accessibility. And our outcomes to date are over 26,000 individuals, so that goal's been met. Enhancing homeownership opportunities, our goal was to provide assistance to 11 households. And right now we're sitting at four, so we're at 36% of our goal. And we really need to focus on that in the upcoming year. Providing social services, our goal was 2,055 individuals and our outcomes today are 4,100, so that is met. And this one, with this final one, is the stabilize the rental gap, but it's actually under providing social services. The goal is to serve five individuals and we've served well over that, as you can see. So that goal is also met. So this is the funding that we had available throughout the year. We had a little bit over a million dollars. The majority of that, 40%, almost, was the PY19 funds that came in. We also had the COVID-19 funds that came in that were about 27%. And the remaining amount was previous year's funding. Mostly it was construction projects that were completed under budget and then they kind of rolled over into the next year. So of that, we spent about half of it. These are the projects that we actually spent money on this year. So not all of them are complete and some of them we just captured the end of it. And they were, the majority of the project was actually completed before that. But this is where the money actually went this year. And as you can see, the big ticket items are definitely the public facilities and infrastructure. So as far as our unspent funds, we have several projects that are going to be completed during this program year. We have the ACHA Home Buyer Assistance Program. We ended up extending their, um, their end date so that they could try to serve more people. And it's since expired and we're working through that and going to get them a new grant agreement for program year 20 funds. But we're working on that right now. But as far as this CAPR goes for PY19, then that was a project that still needed to be completed. Public Works is working on the MMH MS, MMS Streetlights Project and the Fairview Avenue Sidewalk Connection. That's, it's getting pretty close to being complete as soon as the weather warms up. So there's quite a bit of funds in those projects right there. As far as projects that were completed under budget, then Admin and Fair Housing, we didn't need all the money we thought we would. Catch was a little bit less. Boys and Girls Club and the Chateau Chief Joseph Streetlights, they were completed under budget. And all in all, with those, uh, projects, then we have about $22,000 to be reallocated. But I'm holding off on that to see with the projects that are going to be completed on the left-hand side, how much funds are left over there so that we can put all of it together towards the, um, one of the alternative projects that were approved in the PY20 Action Plan. So one of the big focuses of this grant is housing affordability. And the way that we try to address it is, uh, one of the areas is that we provide childcare. So, or we try to work with childcare providers so that parents can work and pay more toward their housing expenses. So the Boys and Girls Club is really helpful with this. We also have the homeownership assistance program so that people can get into a house that's affordable to them. And in PY20, we also started the homeowner rehab program so that people can get the repairs so that they can stay in the homes that are already affordable to them. This has not been a great year for collaboration. It's really tough because a lot of things have been shut down. So we have not been as involved in these groups as we have in previous years. But the groups that we try to work with, uh, some examples are Our Path Home, the Behavioral Health Board, Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition, the Housing and Homelessness Roundtable, and Neighbors United. So there was an original draft CAPR that was posted to our website and there were a few changes to that. These are the only changes that were on there. I, on page seven, I changed the information from Zillow to Realtor.com. And I was able to get better data from them. And on page 18, there was a total in a chart that was incorrect. So I fixed that and then attachment one, that's just updating with all the, uh, public comments, the pub notice, all of those things. So this is what our timeline looks like. The public comment period was open from February 5th through tonight when we'll have the public hearing, the final version and resolution. I will get to you guys on March 2nd if there's any changes to be made. And then I will be able to submit it to HUD by the end of that week. There's any questions? This is my contact information and also our website is listed on there. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Crystal. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thanks a lot, Crystal. You know that 18% rise in home values really stood out. And I think just, you know, further goes to the point of what's happening right now in our community. The fact that, uh, these organizations haven't even been able to help people buy homes because they're being outbid so quickly. What's happening with home values? And, you know, I saw that the city of Boise received like, I think, almost $12 million in CARES Act grant funding for a rental assistance program. I was wondering if something similar to that is possible here? Or if we're just, you know, sort of going through Jesse Tree and we're going to continue that approach? I know they have their own housing authority. I was just curious if, you know, how you would sort of compare where we're at to where Boise's at on that rental assistance.
So that rental assistance program, it's pretty exciting because Ada County also received funding and they received more than Boise did. And so they're able to assist our people and they've been working closely with the Boise staff. So they're all going through Ada County Housing Authority to administer those funds. So our residents will also be able to access that.
That's great. Thank you, Crystal.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just to comment, Crystal, I love your reports and the, and the detail and the passion you bring to providing these services to our community. The two that stand out that I'm just glad to see every year is accessibility and safety. The, the rental assistance and housing truly is complicated as Councilwoman Schrader brought up. There's some of these factors in our market that are just outside of our control. Make it really hard to have as much of a meaningful impact, unfortunately, with some of those parts. But the accessibility and safety components of what's being accomplished is just fantastic to see. And really appreciate the continued focus and success stories that, um, seeing those, what you've highlighted was really nice to see. That's a big part of our community and important to accomplish. So I just appreciate the efforts that you have focusing on those.
Thank you.
Council, any more questions? This is a public hearing. Mr. Court, should we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. If there's anybody who would like to provide testimony on this seven that is in, on the Zoom call, if you could please use the raise your hand function. And we will bring you in for any comments or if there's anyone who'd like to come forward in the city council chambers. Seen no one. Crystal, any final comments?
I had no, thank you all for your time.
Okay. And council, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we close the public hearing for our Community Development Block Program, Program Year 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Councilman Burt.
Circle that motion.
Have a motion second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. You guys have it. Any other motions on this item?
Is that, Mr. Mayor, does that come up tonight or is that at the future, March 2nd?
That's why I'm kind of looking at Bill to see if he happens to know if there's any further action tonight.
I remember the council, I guess I would ask Crystal that. I don't recall if we do a resolution and bring it back, Crystal, or they just approve the report as you presented.
Sorry about that. I have it on the agenda for next, well, I think it's in two weeks. Then I'll have the resolution on the agenda, so I'll just be able to send it all through then.
Okay. Then thank you very much. We will move on to the next item.
Thanks.
Next item is a public hearing for H2021-002. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Alan Tiefenbach, Associate Pine with Meridian. And I'll keep this one relatively short because I think this is very simple. This is a DA modification for the Cincy campus. In a nutshell, in 2007, there's a, there was a large annexation that happened of 170 acres. It was annexation and rezoning. This was called the Pine Bridge subdivision. In 2010, there was a development agreement that was done for the Cincy campus. And following that, Cincy subdivided the property into what was known as the Cincy Commons. When they did that, they actually brought another piece of property in as well, an 11-acre piece of land, which is what the subject property is. The subject property that they brought in at the time was not owned by Cincy when they did the original modification. So it was still subject to the original Pine Bridge. I know this is riveting, the original Pine Bridge Development Agreement. Long story short, Cincy has built out, but there is one piece of land that now they want to develop a warehouse on. And the development agreement only allows CG uses. It does not allow warehouse uses. So this development agreement modification would add warehouse uses to the development agreement, would add this piece of parcel or this piece of property to the development agreement. It would also update the concept plan and the elevations. The only thing I would want to mention is that staff had two recommendations. And the first one was we made a quick, we're, we made a recommendation. Originally, they were proposing to add light industrial uses. That's kind of a broad category. Staff said we'd rather see them just add light industrial uses, or sorry, add warehouse uses as that new use. The applicant was amenable to that. The other thing was when they provided us the concept plan, they showed us what had been built and what would be built in the future. There is a northeast piece of property that on the original concept plan showed a building, which was now shown in green with a pond. Staff in the staff report mentioned that the concept plan was the same except for a piece of open space. The applicant had since responded to the staff report and said, really, that's not open space. We plan to develop that in the future. There is a updated concept plan, which you can see right here. And the difference is that this piece right here originally didn't have E future building on it. It was just showed as that lake and that, and that grass. At staff's recommendation, the applicant has added this E future building. This would be part of the new development agreement. So staff's recommendation would be that revision to add warehouse uses and to adopt this new concept plan that is being shown in front of you today, on today's date. And I'll stand for any questions, council.
Thank you, Alan. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you, Alan. So if you would refresh my memory, so if there were to be a change to, um, to the DA to make this light industrial, um, versus warehouse uses, which I, I agree, by the way, that, that that makes more sense to, to narrow that, that definition for that use, um, what, does there not, I mean, that's, that's essentially, since it's not a use in CG, and perhaps this is a question for Mr. Neri, doesn't that now run into a situation where we are changing, um, zoning? Or am I just crossing those, am I, am I mixing those up?
Alan, Mr. Neri.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you know, you are correct, couple referral. We will have to bring back an ordinance change to create the zone. So we will have to bring that back once they sign the development. They can't even apply for it without the ability under the DA to ask for it. So they're asking for this change and then they'll have to bring back a zoning ordinance change, the property descriptions and everything else to effectuate the actual zone. This is just merely the DA modification.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
That's my pro.
So they could essentially go through this DA modification and still not necessarily have approval on that zoning change. Is that what I'm understanding?
Mr. Rivers, council, you are correct. I mean, they still have to have a request to change the zone. This is just a changing the, the development agreement, they'll allow them to change the zone. They'll still have to have that application and process to go forward, change the zone. We can't just change the zone in the DA. We have to change it through ordinance.
Thank you.
Is this where I get to make my comment? It isn't government grand.
Well, yes, yes and no. You could ask for it at the same time, but if one gets denied, then they both get denied.
Council, any further questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant please come forward? Be recognized for 15 minutes. If you can set up with your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Sam Johnson. I'm, uh, my address is 2701 East Pine in Meridian 83642. Appreciate the, the time to be in front of you, Mr. Mayor and council tonight. I'm, I'm the chief of staff for Cincy and also representing the owners of the property, which is technically HOT1 LLC, or sorry, Triple LP, which stands for Heidi Orville Thompson, who are also the owners of Cincy. So, um, the, we are in agreement with the staff report. This is something that we, when we purchased the ground, we did not know what the property was going to be used for. It's been a hayfield for a while, feeding some sheep. But now it's time to, to turn it into a warehouse because Cincy, like, well, very, very fortunate this past year that Cincy has grown over 90%. And, and it's, uh, it's been a fantastic year. We've had our challenges in, in, in a positive respect versus where a lot of other folks have been. So in order to keep up with that growth, we knew early on this, this year that we needed, this, the summer, that we needed to add some more warehouse space and also distribution space. But that, that distribution space, we are building a new one in South Carolina. That will open up this, this summer. But here on this, on this property, we would like to do a fairly large 211,000 square foot warehouse. It's, it will have a little office component inside of it, but majority of its warehouse for the use of, for housing our, our mostly finished goods, but some raw materials that that will go into another building into manufacturing processes. We agree that, that to be limited to, instead of light industrial for this site, we, we're, we're okay with classifying it as warehouse use. And, and our understanding that, that in the development agreement, we can ask for a slightly different use or a specific use that's maybe not permitted in that zone regularly. So that's where I, this is a little bit of a surprise to us tonight that we're asking for warehouse use to be permitted on this property that is zoned CG. And because it is its, its own property, it can't be, it cannot be an accessory use to another building. It will be its own building on its own property. So that'll be a point that I'd love to, to iron out a little bit better. But that's the reason why we have the, we're here for this application is to expand our growth. We've already got a permit for another 40. We've already got a permit for another 41,000 square feet, uh, warehouse that started a few weeks ago. We're waiting for a permit right now to add on to an existing warehouse along the railroad tracks and, and double its size. And, uh, then this building here is desperately needed. We're renting facilities in, in here, here locally and in Texas. Um, but, uh, our growth has surprised us, and now, uh, we're just trying to get to where we can handle it. Um, I guess I stand for questions at this time.
Thank you, Sam. My main question is how long till Building D gets, uh, built?
Can I see the, okay, Building D? I don't know. We would love to build that. We even have the design, we have it, we have the architectural plans all finished, but we do not have a, a timeline on.
I, I figured not, but, but I would ask. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Hogan.
Question for Mr. Johnson, that might be a concern. People are going to scream if you don't have the Cincy lights at Christmas. I mean, there might be opposition to that bill.
Good point, but that's, uh, I will, I will make sure that we have Christmas lights. It's, it's my job, so I'll do that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask a question of planning. So what I heard, what I thought I heard Alan say was, this is a rezone. What I heard Mr. Johnson say is not a rezone, it's a use exception in the existing zone for the property. Is that, if, if that's the case, we don't need to do a rezone?
That was my understanding, I'm very, now I often admit I'm a little confused. My understanding was that, um, Mr. Johnson is asking, it's zone CG right now, um, the property says what's allowed in that zone, uh, or sorry, the DA says what's allowed in that zone, his request is to add warehouse to those allowed uses per CG. If, if you're saying we also need to rezone the property now to LI, that's not something that we've informed Mr. Johnson he needs to do.
No, and, and I apologize, because what I'd heard, I, I thought I heard you say rezone.
No, sir.
And it requires an ordinance.
Just adding a use to the DA mod.
To the existing zone by development agreement, we have done before.
Yes, sir.
That's fine.
Yes, sir.
So we don't have to do a new application.
Thank you for that. I was just sitting here talking to Sonya, trying to figure out where we were going to move next.
And that's how local government works, where we are great at what we do.
Ms.
Counsel, I'm Pro.
Mr. Mayor, so, I'm sorry, um, Bill and, uh, or Mr. Mr. Neri and Alan, would you, would you clarify for us the difference?
So.
Uh, I, I guess I don't recall us having a lot of conversations about adding uses to zones in the past.
So, Mr. Members of the Council, most of the time, and you're correct, most of the time we limit the uses that are allowed in the zone. But we can allow additional uses if they fit, if it makes sense, the council can allow that contractually by the development agreement. It gets recorded, the zone doesn't change, so the uses in that zone haven't changed. They're allowing this additional use by the development agreement modification. So we don't do that very often, so you're correct, you don't hear that conversation very often. More often than not, it's the opposite, where we won't allow them to do something they're allowed to do. But here, because it's, it's a compatible use to the zone, again, if it was drastically different, if they were doing heavy manufacturing or something that was completely incompatible with the zone that's there, that would be more problematic, and the zone change would be necessary. But this is, again, not done very often, but it does definitely jive with our UDC, so it is okay to do this.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
Counsel, I'm Pro.
How did, how will that affect, um, any sort of design compliance or, um, I mean, obviously, um, you know, CG has very, has very specific requirements for the structure itself, how is that going to be affected, adding that allowed use?
Alan wants it.
Yeah, hi, sorry, counsel person, Alan Tiefenbach, probably more in the planning realm. Um, really, when we're talking about CG use versus IL, we're talking about setbacks, height, those kinds of things. When you're talking about pure design, you were going to the Architectural Standards Manual, that Architectural Standards Manual then has design standards for industrial, commercial, they'll, they'll be, they'll be subject to the exact same design standards, uh, whether they're doing the warehouse or whether they're doing the commercial in that area. The only difference really between the zone would be the setbacks and the allowed height. And in this particular case, they'd still be having to meet the height of the CG zone.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, this is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up?
Mr. Mayor, we had no signups in advance.
Okay, there's nobody else in the audience, but if there's anybody online who'd like to provide testimony, um, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen for, on the Zoom call, and we'll bring you in. Seeing no one wishing to provide additional testimony, I'll ask the applicant if he'd like to make any final comments. No final comments, so counsel, um, do I have a motion or discussion?
Mr. Mayor. I would move that we close the public hearing for H 2021-002.
Again, the motion?
Have a motion a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Hogan.
Considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve, uh, H 2021-0002 as presented in the staff report for hearing date of February 23rd, 2021. And the updated concept plan with the following modifications, and that is, as we discussed, a revision to specific warehouse uses and that, uh, we accept the revised concept plan that labels the pad suite for future development.
Second motion.
I have a motion a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, court call their own.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Aye.
Governor.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to.
Thank you to the staff and the applicant for this evening. Moving on, next item is public hearing, H 2020-0115. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the next application is a request for annexation and zoning. This site consists of 0.63 of an acre of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and is located at 2690 East Franklin Road. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is commercial. The applicant proposes to annex 0.75 of an acre of land with an R2 low-density residential zoning district. The reason for annexation is the existing septic system on the single-family residential property failed late last year, and the applicant had to hook up to city's, uh, water and sewer service. No new development or redevelopment of the property is proposed at this time, and the use will remain residential for the foreseeable future. As a provision of hook-up to city services, annexation into the city is required. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is commercial. Because there is an existing home on this property and the use is proposed to remain residential, an R2 zoning district is requested as recommended by staff as a placeholder zoning district until the property redevelops or a change of use is proposed in the future. At such time, the property should be rezoned and the use and development should be consistent with the commercial future land use map designation. To ensure future development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, staff recommends a development agreement is required as a provision of annexation that requires the property to be rezoned and the agreement modified to include a conceptual development plan consistent with the commercial designation prior to engine, change in use or redevelopment of the property. This would not prevent the applicant from selling the property for continued residential use, but would preclude it from being subdivided to increase the density on the property and further the residential use of the property. The commission recommended approval of the requested annexation. Rich Nebly, the applicant, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented. Uh, written testimony was received from Brad Miller, Adler Industrial, and Rich Nebly, the applicant. Key issues of public testimony, uh, there was concern pertaining to compatibility of R2 zoning of the property with adjacent industrial uses to the north. Um, suggestion for a commercial zoning might be more, uh, compatible and a better option. Um, and again, the R2 zoning is just a placeholder zone until redevelopment occurs in the future. At that time, it will be rezoned to a commercial zoning district. Staff did discuss that with Mr. Miller, and I think, I believe he was okay with that explanation, but he wanted, um, Adler's comments on the record. The applicant, uh, requested not to have a development agreement requirement for this property due to the financial constraints, uh, pertaining to payment, paying an additional development agreement fee. Key issues of discussion by the commission are as follows, uh, the buffer requirements that may apply on adjacent industrial property if the subject property is owned industrial, or excuse me, residential instead of commercial, as de, as designated on the future land use map. Um, and just a side note, a buffer was already required on the adjacent property to the north, uh, recently with the development application. And then second, the reasons for the requirement of a development agreement and whether or not one is needed to ensure future development is consistent with the commercial designation. And, uh, the commission did not make any changes to the staff recommendation, and there are no outstanding issues for counsel tonight, um, other than the applicant's request to not have a development agreement requirement on this property. There have been, uh, no written testimony received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonyas. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Hogan.
Sonya, if you could help me understand that development agreement, you know, I, I know what they're, they're for. If we designate, agree with the R2 zoning for this time, and it looks like, you know, in all intents purposes, the, the property will be commercial someday in the future. Um, the, the DA ensures that it will go to commercial at some future point? Or does it designate how much time that that can be residential? Help, help me think that through, what that DA accomplishes in this situation.
Yeah, um, Mr. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogan, uh, Councilman, the, the development agreement basically ensures that the property isn't re-subdivided in the future, uh, with the residential district to, um, intensify the, the use, basically, the non-conforming use in an area that we want commercial. So if, if you're comfortable with, you know, it going forward, if any redevelopment application came in so far as another use or a rezone, then of course, at that time, we'd look for a, a zoning district that's consistent with the future land use map and no issue. So really, the only thing that that does is keep it from being, uh, re-subdivided for more homes on the property.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up?
Counselman Hogan.
So Sonya, if, if they did hypothetically come in for, uh, to, to be subdivided, what, what process would they have to go through? Is there a point where they can say, someone can say, no, that's not an appropriate, appropriate use?
Not really, um, Councilman Hogan, and, and the city attorney can jump in if he'd like, if he has a different answer, but once, once they have the zoning, they're entitled with that. So they could apply for a subdivision plat, and they, they could allow with that, or they could apply with that zoning, um, to have a, a maximum of two units, um, per acre. Actually, it's not a, it's not a maximum density, I shouldn't say that, our code's not like that anymore, but they, they would have to, um, comply with the dimensional standards of the R2 district, and then depending on, you know, how the property lays out, they could possibly get more density on it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Sonya, thank you, that, that was.
I don't necessarily expect that to happen, but it is planning's job to look out for these situations. So if, if counsel decides a development agreement really isn't necessary, then staff's fine with that.
Mr. Mayor, and Sonya, yes, you're correct. You do have to make sure we look out for these things, and just like lawyers, you know, the what-ifs are very important sometimes, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Uh, I could add, I mean, Sonya is absolutely right. I mean, there, there is a purpose behind the development agreement that would protect against that, and, and I've kind of gone back and forth with this particular project because it is so small of a parcel that trying with the stand, dimensional standards that are necessary setbacks and everything else, to try to put even one more house on this property would be pretty tight to do. It's not impossible to do, but again, along that corridor of Franklin, everything else along there is commercial or office, and to me, the likelihood is going to be another commercial office, you'd have more value, you likely get more. I'm not sure everybody likes to live on a five-lane road like Franklin, so I'm not sure that the future development is rebuilding a house there. I think the reality is, it's probably going to be so. I think Sonya's right, if we want to protect ourselves, I get from the applicant's standpoint, it's another $500, they've already had to pay to hook it up, and the application for, for, uh, annexation is like around $1,200. I get that there's just additional costs for a single home.
Counsel, any further questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I thought I saw him earlier, and I do not see him now, but he may be under a different name. No, no, okay. Oh, we do have an raised hand.
Okay. If, if you can unmute yourself and set your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, he may still be connecting to audio, takes a second sometimes.
Mayor, counsel, can you hear me now?
Very, very faintly could hear.
Can you hear me better?
A little bit better, but you got more to go.
Um, I'm not sure, I'm a little unfamiliar with this process, so, um, I don't know whether I'm doing correctly here.
Yep, you, you got it. If you can just set your name and address for the record, and you'll be recognized for up to 15 minutes.
Okay, uh, Mayor and counsel, my name is Rich Nebly. Um, I'm at, uh, 4050 East Hubbard Road as my address. I am the applicant here for the 2690, uh, East Franklin Road, uh, annexation.
Do you have any, any comments you'd like to make, or would you just like to base upon what staff has already stated?
Um, my, my primary concern was the cost of the, uh, development agreement. I, I understand where Sonya's coming from and where Bill's coming from, and I'm willing to sign it. I was, it, it's a document that you guys are requiring, I didn't ask for it. This project has cost me a lot of money, and I, I'm okay if you want to go ahead with the, with the agreement, I would sign it, but if you could somehow waive the costs of this, because the cost would really help me, uh, I have to redo the whole entire front yard for this project because it was entirely tore up, and, um, that three or 400 bucks that I have to pay for this is, you're basically asking me to pay a bunch of money for a document that you're asking me for the privilege of signing, and I don't get it. Your legal department will be the ones who would put the document together, they're salaried, they, they get paid the same whether they're working on my document or something else that the attorney assigns them to do. And I, I would just, I'm okay, like I said, I would go with the agreement, I understand the, the basis behind it and why it may be needed. I'm just hoping maybe you could waive the fees and absorb those yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Hogan.
Uh, Mr. Nebly, if you could ask, uh, answer for me, um, what is, what is your future intent for this property? Is it going to remain residential, a one home on that property and eventually turn commercial? Since you're surrounded by commercial, what, what are the, if you wouldn't mind telling me future plans for, for that location?
My, my future thing is that, uh, I would keep it as a residential, uh, property. I have current land, uh, tenants in there that have been long-term tenants, they've been very good, I suspect they will be with me for quite some time. Uh, my future at that point, I'm older now, and the only thing I would probably do at some point would be to put it up on market and sell it. Now, whether, I could certainly, um, market it as a zone for commercial and try to sell it for a commercial piece property, but at the same time, who knows, a family may want to buy it and move into it and live in it. Uh, I, I just don't know how to say that. I have no intent of ever commer, developing anything further, and I agree with, I believe it was Sonya that brought it up, that, uh, that, that, it sits on a hillside and kind of goes downhill, and really, to put another home on that property, the geographics just don't work out very well, and I just couldn't ever see that really happening.
Thank you, Mr. Nebly.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Okay. Mr. Schneble, if you can hold on, we'll see if there's anybody else who signed up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up online or in person.
Okay. Is there anybody online who would also like to provide testimony on this item? If you can use the raise your hand feature on the Zoom call? See, no one raising their hand. Mr. Schneble, would you like to make any final comments?
No, sir, we're fine.
Okay. So counsel, I'll turn this over to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I have a question for staff, so I apologize if I missed this, but if Mr. Schneble, I hope I say his name correctly, were to decide to market this property as commercial in the future, and this DA modification is not in place, would there be a risk of him not being able to do that? You know, would he still be able to market, and technically, there isn't anything that would guarantee that, I mean, it is the future land use, in the future land use map, so I would assume that it would, that a buyer, new owner would, could move forward with commercial application, but are there any downsides to him not signing the DA or not having the DA when he goes to sell the property?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, Councilman, if a development agreement is required as a provision of this annexation, and the applicant chooses not to sign it, the property will not be annexed, and he will be in violation of his agreement with the city too, that allowed him to hook up to city services. That agreement required him to annex. If you do not require a development agreement tonight, he or a future developer or owner would need to rezone the property prior to any commercial development of the property, consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Oh, because it, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Members of council, so to answer the second half of your question, Councilwoman Pro, so the only thing that would be allowed on this property is residential, and so they'd have to come back for a rezone anyway. The reality, and as Mr. Schneble stated, a significant portion of this property goes downhill. So there really isn't, from a surface point, and you can't really tell from this aerial, I don't, I'm no builder, but there does not appear to be that much room to put another house on there, unless it's a very, very small house. So it really would be tough to subdivide that when a significant portion is on a slope. So that's why I'm not as concerned. We have done it both ways with small parcels like this that have come in for, because they've hooked up to services, because their septic's had failed. Sometimes we've required it in areas where we were concerned that they could redevelop into something that's really unwanted. This is one from a personal opinion, I don't see that as likely, it's more likely to be developed as a commercial property in the future. That appears to be the value along that section of Franklin, so I am not as concerned, but I agree with Sonya that certainly, if you want to tie that up, you can't, there is no provision to waive fees in our code, so we couldn't waive the fee, so it's either require the DA, you have to pay the fee, or you don't require the DA, and again, I think the risk is fairly small.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Personally, just my two cents, I don't think we should make Mr. Schneble do the DA agreement. It seems like a low likelihood that it's an issue, and like, it might, you know, sort of present a real obstacle to him, and he told us his intention with the property, it's small, doesn't seem feasible, they're going to add more houses on it, I'd be okay with letting this one go without one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I agree, these very unique, very, very unique narrow circumstance of facts make me comfortable as well that a DA is not necessary. I do really appreciate, Sonya, you encouraging a DA. Anytime we can use those, that we benefit from them, everyone does, the clarity that comes with them, so thank you for bringing that up for certain, but I too am comfortable that this is a unique exception, and the minutes would reflect that anybody, any adjacent parcel, east or west on this, it says there's no intent or desire to allow someone to try and annex and assemble properties and create some commercial zone, because this is clearly not intended to, or residential, excuse me, not intended to be residential, but under these very unique circumstances, it seems appropriate.
Counsel, any further questions or motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I'm happy to make a motion. If there aren't further comments, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second motion.
I have a motion, a second, close the public hearing, now in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name, the ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I move, after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, to approve file number H 2020-0115, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of February 23rd, 2021, with the modification, if it's needed, that we will not require a development agreement.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, court could call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Aye.
Gavner.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Counsel, would we like a 10-minute break before we go into this last one? Okay. With that, we'll take a recess until 8:15.
Okay, how do I get out of this? Well, I hit the leave button.
All right, counsel, we will go ahead and come back from our recess. And next item up is a public hearing for Prescott Ridge H 2020 dash 0047. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next applications before you are request for annexation and zoning in a preliminary plat. At the December first hearing of last year, the council moved to reman this project back to the commission for the out parcel at the northeast corner of the site adjacent to the commercial development to be included in the annexation area and development plan for the site. And that is, if you'll remember, it was this, whoops, this area kind of right in this red area here at the northeast corner. Since that time, the applicant has acquired the out parcel and submitted updated plans that include the parcel in the development area. The staff report has been updated accordingly. The commission heard this project on January 21st and recommended approval of the updated plans and the annexation boundary. Mr. Mayor, would the council like me to go back through the whole application again? Or is everybody up to date on this? And would you like to proceed forward with the, just that update?
Counsel, do you have a, which version would you like? All or just the update? One, all, two, update?
Update.
Mr. Mayor, I've read, you read the staff report, reviewed our conversation, planning and zoning. I'm good with just the update.
There you go. Update. Just the update. Just the update.
I just did the update. I was done, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
You either get that or you get the long version. Nothing in between.
All right. Well, with that, then we will say, counsel, do you have any questions for staff?
No, this time.
Okay. Then with that, we will ask, invite the applicant to come forward. Mr. Mayor, he's on his way in. He's getting unmuted now. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Patrick Connor. My address is seven zero one South Allen Street, Brady in Idaho. I'm having trouble sharing my screen. It says another participant is sharing, so I'd like to have the opportunity to share.
You're getting that corrected?
Great, thank you.
Can try now. And you'll be recognized for 15 minutes.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you again for having us tonight, Mr. Mayor, council members. As Ms. Allen said, we were remanded back to planning and zoning. January 21st, we added in the one and a half acre parcel which we acquired. It's now fully part of this project. There are some changes, and when I get to those, I will call them out. Improvements, given a lot of the comments that you all made last year and improvements to the project and giving this thing another go ahead through planning and zoning and through our neighborhood meetings. So the project is called Prescott Ridge. The location of the project is south of Chindon Road and east of McDermott. The future land use map shows majority of the property as medium density residential with the north part of the property as mixed use regional. Just want to point out the far west side of this mixed use regional area has some existing homes that are located in the county that are within that excuse regional area. The current zoning map, we have general commercial to the north and R four and R eight to the south and to the east. Our requested zoning boundaries are shown here. Like I said, a majority is the R eight, which is almost 100 acres, about 20 acres of commercial and R 15 of 8.82 acres shown in orange for our multifamily and town home courses of the project. The preliminary plat is the same as you've seen before. We have 371 buildable lots. Two of those lots, one of them is a school parcel and one of them is the proposed medical campus on the north part of property. We have a 309 single family homes, 90 of which are potential zero lot line homes. Thirty-eight town home lots, eight single family attached lots within that town home community. We have 14 multifamily lots with proposed four plexes on each one of those lots, 42 common lots. We have 12.43 acres of qualified open space. One of the questions that you all had last time was how much open space do we have without our buffers? And so we did that calculation and we came up with just over 10 acres or 12.7%, which is over the required open space. Our amenities, we have many scattered throughout the community. We have one central park in the middle with a pool and large top lot and clubhouse. And then to kind of scattered around, we have three small top lots, pocket parks and a dog park area. Recreational pathways, which I'll get to next, are a big part of the project and big desire of our community members. One big change I'll get to in detail was council member Schrader, I think, suggested to have a pocket park or a playground just for the multifamily portion of the site. So that was one thing that we've accommodated for. Here's some shots of, renderings of our amenities. A large clubhouse and the pool and a large top lot. And then the smaller top lots that are scattered throughout the community. Dressing connectivity, what's shown here is pathways that are through common lots that kind of break up the larger blocks to increase pedestrian connectedness and also recreational opportunities. We do have a 10-foot Parks Department pathway which runs from the north part through the medical campus through the site, which connects to the future school site on the east side of the property. We also have a 10-foot pathway along Rustic Oak Way to the south of us to the Oaks North subdivision. It connects to the already constructed Parks Department pathway along Chindon. The facing plan is shown here. Specifically, phase one is shown here with almost the full expanse of the property, giving us two points of access to McDermott and to Chindon. This is a main point that we worked with the city on and worked with fire department on to ensure fire, life, safety, access and having two points of access to the community. Also, as this side shows, once the full buildout of Rustic Oak Way is done and this collector is installed, it will serve Oaks North to our south. And it will improve their response times of fire and ambulance and police response times to Oaks North as well. So the investment that we're putting forward in the first phase will not just positively affect us, but possibly affect our neighbors as well, and that was important to us. Paragon Heights is a private subdivision to our west. They currently have a private road that only has access to Chindon. We will intersect with them to the south. And we wanted to ensure that they have emergency access in the future. And so we've offered to have and to build them a digital gate that has an opticon device to ensure that they have Meridian Fire Department access. And this plan was improved by the fire department. There's some shot, we've worked with the neighbors on what sort of gate that they would want. If it's part of their community. Here shows all of the housing types that are scattered throughout our community. As you can see, we have about five different product types. Majority of them are this mixed 45, 50 and 60 foot homes that you see in yellow. We do have these smaller lots located in the blue areas, which are 40-foot lots. And most of them have the option to be single family attached as well to kind of break up the streetscape. This was a really good offer by the city to, an idea to help us kind of diversify our product line and help appeal to a diverse number of buyers. In green, you'll see we have the townhomes there and then also the red is multifamily. These large lots centered around the existing Paragon Heights community are shown in purple. And these lots are 70 feet to 100 feet wide. And working with the neighborhood over the past year, over the, over a year, we've, we're asking for a condition to have these nine lots as single story to help diffuse the impact of their, on their view corridor of the, of the mountains. And this is something that they've asked for and we're willing to work with them and given these single story houses to help lessen the impact. Here's some examples of our typical home elevations. These are for 50 and 60 foot lots. And these are attached single family lots. So digging deeper into the different clusters of our residential areas, the townhome and single family is shown here. This is one particular area that we focused on early in the project and met with planning and zoning twice on to ensure this is the best possible product and have two points of access both to two different public roads, both to Rustic Oak here and Wildfire to the south. There's 46 total units with three different product types in here. 29 rear load townhomes, nine front load townhomes and then eight single family attached. Each of these come with a private yard, each have a two-car garage and a parking for space in their driveway. In addition, there's 15 overflow spaces here on the west side of the central mew located here. And we also have this private park, or not private park, but it's a community park over here as well for more kind of program things, cookouts, there's a gazebo, potentially a fire pit. While we keep this mew open for more kind of spontaneous recreational opportunities. Here's an example of the rearload townhomes, the front load townhomes and the duplexes on the south side. Here's an example of some mews that we've worked on as, as a team around the country that function really well in creating community and giving folks that live in an area without a large yard, an area to recreate together. And here's some examples of the townhome gathering area, the community girl picnic areas, outdoor seating and a fire pit. Now, this particular site plan changed slightly and then approved thanks to the good comments from you all. We added two areas of public gathering space. We have a playground here in the bottom corner as well as a community mailbox center. And we have a gathering space here. The finer details of this site plan will be made during the CUP process when this portion of the project comes up. But this is something that we really are excited about and we're, it's a big improvement and we're glad we had the opportunity to go back and make the adjustment to these lots and shifting them. We're able not to lose any units, but be able to add this, this amenity. Here's some renderings of these fourplex units. For all of our homes, townhomes, multifamily and for single family, we're committed for 100% energy certified. Last year, we led the valley with Brighton and the number of homes that were 100% energy star certified. This cuts down obviously on energy emissions, but also on cost of, of energy costs for our homebuyers. Here's an example of our design center, which all homebuyers are able to come in here in Meridian to choose all the details of their home. And then here's some shots of our interior. Lastly, the medical campus, there, this is the, the reason why we're remanded back to planning and zoning and we're able to purchase this 1.3 acre parcel, which is located here in the northeast corner. We were able to rotate this building based on suggestions from our neighbors to help with alleviating some of the conflict of their view. We know a view is something that can't really be protected, but it's something that we wanted to ensure. If, if it was something we could do, we could accommodate some of their concerns there. And also, this building is now 537 feet from the property line. Per code, when, with the residential use and a general commercial use, I believe the building could be up to 25 feet. So we're significantly on that with this medical office building here, which is a four-story building with retail and restaurant on the first floor, which I'll show you in a rendering next. The hospital building here is still three stories tall. We've tried to integrate and mitigate the impact of this medical campus with some green areas and outdoor seating as well as a large 30-foot buffer around, around our corner, which the pathway will snake around the whole site to integrate with the neighboring residential community as well as the greater community outside on Chindon Road to the Parks Department, Parks 10-foot pathway. Because we have this full corner now part of the site, we're able to have two points of access to Rustic Oak Way. This first access is a ride and ride out only based on its distance from the signalized intersection. And then this access here is a full movement access. We still have the fire access road runs to the northwest of our property. This intersects onto Serenity Lane, which per their plat is a private road for access of emergency access for all parcels adjacent to this Serenity Lane. Here's a shot of the medical campus. This is the four-story building here with the retail and commercial on the first floor as well as a three-story hospital building here located in the center of the site. Here's some shots of some of the outdoor accommodations that we're trying to provide here from the medical campus to both integrate within the community, but also mitigate the impact of having a commercial use next to a residential area. And we, there's a letter written to the city as part of the record of some comments that are still outstanding with the city. And I just, with medical campus, and I just want to talk about some of them. One of the concerns is the hospital would have nowhere to grow. And the response to that is the existing medical campus has no intent to grow beyond this 15-acre site. It will be built in over three phases and over multiple years. Another comment was that ITD wouldn't, would not allow our access for emergency access road in the northwest corner and that the HOA would not allow our access. We did talk to ITD about and having some right-of-way encroachment, they did not deny our access. Also, the 15-acre parcel that is medical campus is on is part of the Paragon Heights subdivision, which is part of the recorded, their recorded plat in 1995 as lot 18 block one. And on this plat, there is a note that says that Serenity Lane is designated as a private road for the purpose of ingress, egress utilities and emergency vehicle access. Another concern is the fire department says a frontage road is not required. The city code is what was requiring the frontage road, not the fire department. Another comment from the neighbor was a hospital just asked for variance for more stories. The proposed site plan can't change once approved and there is a height limit of 65 feet. So there will be not be additional stories there. Also, there was some comments about not having to rush the project. And I just want to say it's, and in April 2020 is when we first submitted this project. We've had three planning and zoning hearings. This is the second time we've presented to council, four neighborhood meetings, three pre-application meetings, countless conversations on and on. So we think a lot of the concerns that were brought to this project with the neighbors have been addressed. We've accommodated a lot of their concerns. And we're really proud of, of where we're at today and bringing this project to, to the city. In addition, the last thing they said is-
If you can wrap up your comments.
The comp plan says to support the existing neighborhood residential, like I said, we have accommodated over and beyond what is required. So just to conclude, thank you all for having us present tonight. We're happy to have the 1.3 acre parcel as part of this project. And we just really think this is a premier project for Northwest Meridian. And we, we look forward to being part of the community. It was, it was well received by planning and zoning. I think we've, and given this almost 10 months of going through this public process, we've made a lot of changes and a lot of improvements. And with that, I stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. I have multiple questions, so please bear with me. I'll probably have some follow-ups as well. When I first started reviewing this again, I was thinking I had never heard this application before because there's so many changes. And then went, went through and started recognizing some of, of what we had heard a few months back and realized that I have a lot more questions than I did last time, which is always a good part of the process. So the, and, and I apologize that I know some of these things were gone over with the Planning and Zoning Commission and I did not have a chance to fully review their, their transcript. So the first question I have is, and, and if the mayor would permit, would it be possible for me to ask the applicant a question, have them answer and then allow me to continue to ask those questions? Or would you like me to ask all the questions at one time?
If you, if you've got a list, go back and forth. I'm not going to, like you go through me, so.
Okay. Thank you. So my first question is, you know, when I, it's a unique, it's a unique project. It's unusual to have residential this close to a medical campus, of course. And so, you know, I think of a hospital as a big working functioning facility. That's not that different from any big commercial facility. And so you've stated that there will likely be an entire bottom floor of retail and restaurant. And so I'm wondering if you could show us where the loading trucks, where, where trucks will be coming and going in relationship to the residential? And if you could take us through what that looks like? Because I, in addition to, you know, just noise, there's going to obviously be a lot of movement and lighting and whatnot.
Absolutely. So this, you can still see my screen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, great. This is the the larger hospital here. The loading zone is on the south side. Right here, that's also the area of any sort of trash or drop off traffic will be located right here. Initially, iterations of this hospital was orientated clockwise 90 degrees. And so the loading zone was on this side. We had a lot of strong opposition that the loading zone was too close to the existing neighbors from the neighbors. And so we rotated it here for the four story retail and commercial use. Which is required or recommended for the mixed use regional zoning. The, I don't think this building's been fully assessed out as far as the drop where the loading zone would be. But given it would be a restaurant and a store, maybe a pharmacy. I the loading zone would be probably through either side, far the west side or the south side. But just in this parking general area. As far as the lighting that you brought up, we'll fully comply with the city shielding policy. To kind of take care of the dark skies initiatives. And have those lights, you know, making sure they're they're not distracting or shining to neighbors backyards. As we go through the conditional use process as well for this medical campus, we can get really narrow on the type of. Of lights that are going to be recommended for this particular area. With this being a medical campus, I just want to kind of clarify, it's, we call it a boutique medical campus. Because it's primarily going to be for women's health and pediatric services and outpatient services. So we're, there won't be a particular lot of overnight stays. It's really just for surgeries in and out. Typical operating hours are 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM to schedule those those surgeries and operations. So it's it's really kind of a low impact hospital use. It's not a trauma hospital. There won't be a ton of ambulances and helicopters and things going in here. Those will go to St. Alice and St. Luke's. This is really kind of a more regional boutique medical campus with more neighborhood friendly operating hours. And if there's any other questions on the medical campus, I'd love to talk about it.
Yes, thank you. So so then the the hospital itself, where where the loading is going to happen. Primarily, there's going to be supplies being loaded in there. Obviously, there'll probably be cafeteria in that building. What what is the, are there are there limitations on loading on hours? Are there hours for trucks to load and unload? And then what is the distance from? The building there where the loading is to the the closest residents?
I have, I don't, right here from the residence to our west, it's 172 feet. I don't have the exact measurement from this edge to here. I would imagine it's probably about 140, 150 feet. Again, the setback per code was 25 feet. We're trying our best to move this building as far away from residences as possible. Without affecting the ability for the hospital to function and looping traffic and having, you know, people to park safely. If they need to in case emergencies and access for for patients. As far as operating hours for the for the loading zone, that's something I think we could potentially talk about in the conditional use permit process. I'm I'm not aware of of other requirements of other medical campuses and other communities for loading zones. But I would imagine that they would only come during operating hours typically in the morning or the early afternoon. But we can have that as a as a potential condition in the conditional use permit process.
Okay, typically conditional use permits are decided by our planning and zoning commission. So that's not a decision we'll likely have a say in, but I would like to see those hours limited for sure. And yeah, I'd like to see those hours limited and and likely you probably haven't had that conversation frequently. Because it's rare to have residential this close to loading zone of a hospital. So I wouldn't be surprised if you hadn't had that conversation before. Okay, the second question I had is about the emergency care and you said that there would not be. A lot of ambulatory services required because it's not going to be a trauma hospital, emergency hospital. However, one of the decisions before us tonight is the the entry into this. And it being used for emergency service, there there is a 90, what 95,000, 100,000 square foot hospital being built just to the north of this. And I'm sure you probably have watched the presentations. And I'm guessing you you watched the decision that was made for that property to the north when the conversations that were had about. Requiring that applicant to create an arterial type of street to enter in to the hospital. To to the development to in in exchange for not being able to access Chinon directly. And so is that something that's been a conversation that you've had? Because I I would make that expectation, I would expect that we would have that a similar requirement for you as we created for them. Which is that the the entrance to, i- if you're going to request emergency services is, let me preface that. That 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 decision before us to see me that we would have the same expectation as the applicant to the north. So just curious your thoughts on that.
Sure, I'll just chime in real quick. So the Rustic Oakway off of Chindon Road is our is our access point to Chindon. And so, yes, the medical emergency services would access not directly onto Chindon. Because IDD did not want direct access to Chindon other than off of Rustic Oak. So that is our route for medical services. Again, this emergency area is is really only required based on the level of surgeries and operations that there'd be scheduling in this hospital. It most of the time would function similar to primary health. For, you know, flu shots, vaccines, things like that. People that need stitches or broken wrists can come here and and get those items addressed. So did you want to, so I also have Stephanie Leonard here who can probably give some more commentary.
Hi, counsel, Stephanie Hopkins now, but our address is 9233 West State, Boise 83714. In response to Councilwoman Peralta's question about the exception to access to an arterial roadway. We are asking for a similar exception from the council tonight. To allow us to use Rustic Oak as our primary access for any emergency access that would be required. The, it would be very similar to the Pollard subdivision that was approved to the north as far as that exception. And I think Sonya included something in her staff report to that effect. We do have a representative as well from the hospital that would like to speak. And I think she's in the waiting room too, if it's appropriate for her to enter.
I just have one more quick question. I'm sure counsel appreciates that and then the mayor can respond to that request, Stephanie. Good to hear from you. So the the other question I have then is. Can you share, I guess, a bigger picture understanding of the need to add this facility when we have another hospital coming in just across the street? And then I have this what if question that may never ever happen, but I have to ask it. If by some chance we you were to have ambulances that were to arrive at this intersection from both hospitals at the same time. How is that going to work with priority? And how's that going to work with the with, I assume there are probably, or well, I know for a fact that there'll be a light going in there. If I remember correctly, from the Pollard application, how is that going to get prioritized on a on a highway, a state highway? With two hospitals across the street from each other?
I think that's an excellent question for Betsy Hunsinger to to answer as far as how 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 those ambulances or EMSs are going to make that decision. On which emergency services to access on either side. Oh, and I'll just real quick before Betsy hops in. So I I I didn't include a slide, but it showed. How, yes, we're well aware of the the hospital across the street. And the the argument that that I believe in is that we have the opportunity based on the location of. The intersection of the two highways to create a regional medical area with two different medical providers. From a consumer standpoint, it would create more competition between these two medical providers. And potentially bring down costs and hopefully increase the quality of care. That's kind of my standpoint. The user HDA that we have for this site welcomes the competition. And in fact, kind of enjoys it because there is an opportunity for some sort of collaboration. As well as it it creates a a foundation of jobs and tax base in this particular area. Which can spur future development for whether more restaurants or more commercial properties, parks, things like that. It creates this regional hub of medical area that, you know, you may go for pediatric services to our campus. And you may go for orthopedic services to the other campus based on, you know, how people or how the market perceives. These medical campuses and and what populations they serve and what services they provide. I think it's a good time for maybe Betsy to chime in if you can invite her into this conversation.
Hi, I'm I'm in. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Betsy Hunsiger and I'm with HDA Healthcare. So I'll try to kind of answer a few questions that I heard kind of over the last couple of comments. So first of all, EMS agencies have protocols for how they manage, you know, they both arrive and who goes first and whatever. So EMS agencies have protocols for for how they would manage that. Secondly, so we were initially partnering with BBA on the project to the north. So we were the hospital partner on that project. For a variety of reasons, we have not moved forward and have moved to this location. So if they have a new hospital partner, I I'm not aware of that. That doesn't mean they haven't, they don't have a new hospital partner. But but that is, I think, from my perspective, you know, one data point as part of this. As far as the loading dock and the hours, typically Patrick was right, typically our our. Our deliveries come in the mornings during, I mean, they come, you know. They're not coming at 5:00 AM, but they do probably start around 7:00, 7:30. And then, you know, they go through early afternoon for any kind of food try, you know. Food delivery service or other supply loading services. And then and and that is fairly easily managed with those trucks. I think those are the main questions that I wanted to weigh in on.
Counsel, Councilman Perrow, did you feel like you got your question answered?
Thank you. Just one, one more. So with with the with the expectation of the Pollard subdivision having a, almost a boulevard type of entry. Into their development, is that something that you would consider doing? I really would like to see those, I would like to be to see it be consistent on both sides of the highway, considering the nature. Of the projects. Is that something that the applicant would consider if counsel so requested?
This is Patrick again. To answer your question, we've coordinated with the developers of the Pollard subdivision. Ensuring our alignment on our streets does line up and talking with ACG and working with them. The width that is shown here is suitable. I think Pollard is looking more for a grand entrance as far as the number of lanes. Coming in and out was suitable for the traffic flow that is going to be generated by the community and and the medical campus. We have expanded it with the acquisition of this 1.3 acre parcel. We did it, we did widen the space a little bit more. Because we're able to do that. We are limited to our east of our project because that is still privately owned. But we've gone as far as we can, keeping that alignment in line with the Pollard subdivision and their boulevard to the north. But like I said before, we've worked with them in ACD ensuring that our intersection is aligned well. So when that light does come in later this year or next year, it will function correctly. As an operating intersection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Councilman Hugland.
Mayor, Mr. Connor, I I was reading and I can't remember if I read it in the fire department report. Or if it was part of the application packet that along McDermott, the development there is outside of our or at right at the five minute boundary of response time. And I was reading some things that you were going to put in AEDs or some items like that in the clubhouses. Or is that going to be in all the clubhouses?
I, council, councilman, we just have one clubhouse here located in the middle of the project. And we will have an AED there device as recommended by the fire department.
And and follow up, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hugland.
And and Connor, I don't know if you were able to tune in earlier to our to our council session. That about our discussion about possibly not being able to build a fire station in North Meridian. Depending on what the legislature does to property tax revenue. What what additional changes would you make to this development to ensure that these residents would have? Suitable emergency access and and items to to help them protect their property. If we're going to have future growth, there's lots of applications that have already been approved. And now if we can't go forward with a subdivision or a fire station to service this subdivision in a timely manner. That that creates additional pressure on on residents.
Councilman, absolutely, it's it's. It is something that we would hope to continue to work with the fire department, determine what their needs are to ensure adequate fire life safety. Because that's that's the number one priority and that's that's why we committed to providing the two points of access to McDermott and to Rustic Oakaway. Because of that question of making sure that that's the best it can be, fire, life and safety. As far as what else I could do to solve the problem, I don't have any answers today. I think we are on the same page of the impacts of this proposed legislation. Obviously, I think it's in our best interest to work together with our legislators. To ensure we're all making the right decisions for our whole state. As far as fire life safety, we would obviously work with the fire department to see where their needs are and how we can help. I'm sure you can get pretty creative in different ways. I I don't have any direct answers today, but we would ensure that's number one priority.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Connor. If I might, I want to like to ask Deputy Chief Monjorno. Just to to make sure my memory is correct, is that within the five minutes, chief? Or was that McDermott portion of it outside the five minute response time for our current fire station that would service this area?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hugland, if I can take over the screen, I'll share the map with you.
You can do that now.
It's coming here. You guys, let me know when you can see it.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the the current, obviously, the slime green is our five minute response time. As calculated by our GIS group. So right here is is Levi Lane and then the the roadway that. Patrick had talked about, you know, coming through and tying into McDermott. So the five minute response, it it kind of does this point right here because the road ends, Levi Lane just ends. It doesn't go through. So once they push this road through, the five minute response time will creep in. Probably about equal to what Serenity Lane is. So it'll it'll come into roughly about right here. And then all of this area, including part of the Oaks, is outside of our response time as as it sits right now. The other problem we have, which kind of exacerbates the issue is we can't make that left turn onto McDermott. Because it's it's that movement isn't allowed at this time. So. So what Patrick said is true. It will help us because we will be able to go up Levi Lane and get into this area that's not covered. that's not covered for view. Sorry if I'm moving this around too much. The property that we're looking at that we own for a future fire station is is this one right here. This is where this lot is. If you can see my cursor moving. So this one would be almost a direct shot to come in the back way off Mc McDermott to assist with fire coverage. So as it stands, yes, a good majority of this is outside of our response time. Obviously, the hospital area that we've talked about will be fire sprinkled and it's a hospital. So we're good there. His apartment area, all of those will be sprinkled and this area right here where the townhomes are, unless they're built off the IRC, they would not need to be. But if they're built off the IBC, then those would be sprinkled as well. So that's kind of where we're at. And and yes, I I did recommend because of the longer response times that they put AEDs in their clubhouses or, you know, somewhere appropriate. So that way we have fire and life safety covered if possible.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Maybe just a few comments for Patrick and the applicant team. I I do appreciate some of the changes to your plan. I appreciate the changes to the multifamily, especially to make sure those kids have a place to play and a little more breathing room. I appreciate the changes, you know, to the layout and the buffering and how you've tried to work with the neighbors. I, you know, just to sort of give you a feel for how this example fits through this proposed legislation that may come may come to pass and kind of the discussion we had previously. If I'm just looking at this holistically, this is at the limits of where our city is now. For this to be successful, we need to have another ladder truck that could get here quickly. We need to have fire service that could get here in a reasonable amount of time, which requires another fire station. Right now, the nearest police substation is, I think, nine miles away, if I read that correctly. We need to extend the McDermott sewer trunk. We need to extend water services here. And I'm probably leaving things out. So there there's just a huge amount of investment that we would normally make as a city for a project like this to be successful. But because this is an annexation, we would potentially only capture 75% of the property tax revenue associated with this project. And so that's where I'm having a lot of heartburn and it's not your fault. And we don't want to be in this position, but I I think it that is a big struggle for me right now with not understanding fully what will happen with this legislation, but feeling like as Councilman Borton said earlier, our city is sort of at a turning point and a kind of critical moment with how we're going to evolve going forward and look at growth. So I just wanted to sort of share those thoughts with you. We were talking about taking what we were calling a pause on approvals and decisions on these types of projects, annexations especially. You know, do you hope for us to render a decision this evening? Or do you, you know, would you prefer a continuance ultimately on this project? Or how are you sort of looking at that in light of that legislation and how we're looking at things?
Thank you, Councilwoman Schrader. Yes, I I completely understand your standpoint. I appreciate the feedback that you gave to us last time we met with you all. As you can see, we made a lot of improvements based on a lot of your comments. So I just want to say thank you for those. Yes, obviously, we want this project to move forward. We we would like for the project to be approved, obviously. You know, if there's an opportunity to have our approval contingent on this bill being being denied, that's something we'd be open to. Obviously, I I think that your decision tonight potentially will be delayed. At least that's kind of what I'm picking up on. But I I would like you all to consider this project, you know, without the elephant in the room. But holistically tonight, how it stands, how it fits in your in your city and and the positive impacts of it. And then once we understand the legislation more and and once it kind of goes through its process in the State House, you know, as as more of us from the local governments come in and 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 work with our state legislatures, I I I think it's going to look a lot different. And I think that the cost of development should pay for itself and that we don't want to put anyone in any pain financially, the city or individuals. So we definitely heard your comments before and we totally respect your decision to continue it. I I would, it'd be great if we could do a condition of approval based on the outcome of this bill. And that's up for you all to decide and discuss. I think that kind of summarizes what what I feel about it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you for for saying that. I I've never seen us condition something on a piece of legislation and I that just that makes my head spin on how that would how that would work. I can only speak for myself. I think the changes that you've made to the project have been good and have moved it in a better direction. You know, for me, the the biggest hang up is the elephant in the room. And so I I if I were in, I can't tell you how to how to proceed on it. But if I were in your shoes, I would ask for a continuance at this time. Once I had the feedback on the changes to the project. That's just me. As a businesswoman, that's what that's where my head would be at. When I'm just one one of many, but thanks for those comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I I agree with Councilwoman Schrader's comments 100%. Connor or Patrick, I that that elephant's pretty big that's in the room. He's not small. He's pretty big. So I bad timing, honestly. So I think I'm just with, we were pretty clear in our message at the beginning of our meeting today. So I I'm with Councilwoman Schrader on this.
Mr. Mayor, if if we can, can we continue to talk about the project and any other feedback from anyone else? And likely at the conclusion of that, we can consider a continuance. I just want to make sure that assuming we we keep functioning as a as a state and a city as normal, that we can then bring a really positive, good product to you guys. And I hear all comments. So when we come back from being continued, we have an even better project.
Yeah, Patrick, we we have people who are online to testify as well. So we're going to hear from the public. We're going to take all the testimony. We'll consider, we'll continue the conversation. So we get that feedback and viewpoints from that standpoint. So counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, then with that, we will go to our public testimony. Mr. Cork, do we have anybody sign up in advance to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we had nobody sign up in advance, but we do have several people online.
Okay, if there's anybody that would like to provide testimony on this item at this time, if you could please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom platform and we will bring you in. See, we have one person so far.
And first is Sue Ropske.
Sue, after you unmute yourself, if you can say your name and address for the record and you'll be recognized for three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Sue Ropske. I live at 6262 North Serenity Lane. That would be the second lot. As you turn in to Serenity on the east side, I've lived here since 1998. I, as well as many of my neighbors, continue to have issues about the frontage road. I'm a registered nurse and I know what it takes to staff a hospital that's going to be open 24 hours a day, taking care of 60 inpatient beds. That staffing parking lot is in the back behind my home. My concerns are the shifts are going to be turning in on Serenity and taking that frontage road to zip into that back parking lot and go into the staff lot. So I'm concerned about the lights that will be shining 24 hours a day pulling in. There's no barrier between the first lot, my next door neighbor to the north. And so I I have concerns about the safety, the noise and the lights for the employees and the use of that back road. My my other concern is first, I want to thank you for the really nice sidewalk you've put in for us. I actually use that sidewalk and walk down to Costco now. But one of my concerns is that I'm now going to be walking on a sidewalk that's going to be between Channing Road on one side and a frontage road on the other side. So as a pedestrian, it's it's doesn't leave you feeling the safest, especially on days that there's there's a little bad weather. So I I just want you to take the safety into account also. And I, the other question my husband brought up was he had commented that a floor in a building has to be almost 11 feet. So if that building is 65 feet tall, is it really only going to be four stories? Or is the chance that they may extend it upward? So Mayor and Council, thank you for giving me a few moments of your time.
Thank you, Sue. Counsel, any questions? Okay. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else online who would like to provide testimony at this time?
Mr. Mayor, no hands raised at this time.
Okay. Would the applicant then like to make any final comments?
Yes, I would, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Sue, for your testimony. Just for some clarification, the what you call the frontage road is it's functioning like emergency access road. And so there will be no cut through traffic, anything like that from staff or anybody. There'll be significant signage. We've had some conversations with the fire department on whether we can gate this emergency access road. I think that's still up for debate. We'd have to have sufficient turnaround. We fully intend to make sure and not encourage anyone to use this access as as a as an access into the hospital. As far as the lights shining during the CUP process, we'll have a photometric test to ensure that there's no light leakage into the residences. And also, I don't know if I mentioned this earlier, but we'll have an eight foot masonry wall along the property line to the west side and the south side and along here. And that's required per code between commercial and residential use. So that will definitely cut down any sort of noise, any other site nuisance that may be between the two different uses. And and lastly, the comment about the the height of the buildings per per the zoning category, it's 65 feet maximum. The medical hospital buildings, three feet only or three stories only. And then the medical office building is four stories. It won't exceed 65 feet. And then
Oh, and I'll just add to that if we, this is Stephanie again, if we if we did want to modify those heights, we'd have to modify the development agreement to be consistent with the new elevations or concept plan. That would be the result of changing those buildings. So.
I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
To that last point, any if there were to ever be a request to modify a development agreement to to make that ask, that would be a future public hearing as well. Even though I understand that's not the intent, but that is all done in public if it ever does happen.
So counsel, just, you know, back to the conversations that have existed. From my standpoint, I do like this project, the changes that it made. I think it was a wise decision to remand back and and get the issues addressed. So we knew what we were moving forward with. Whether it's legislative, where it's legislative or the conversation counsel will likely have in a couple of weeks or in about a month regarding our decision on future fire stations, we would at least know in theory either if we're going to do one or two or which one is going to go first in the in the north or the south potentially. There's a lot of good questions that I think the council will get answered here in the next six weeks that would really allow a more informed decision, whether it's monetary or otherwise for this area, both for the applicant and for the city, quite frankly, from that standpoint. So with that, any further comments, questions, suggestions, directions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I I think it's wise that that we address the elephant in the a room as it regards to potential legislation that could impact us. From our discussion, my takeaway earlier today is is the fact that we do have to know what we're dealing with. Certainly, this project has has improved. There's very good elements of it, but at the same time, we might not be able to provide essential services to areas of our community. And before proceeding with that, I I just feel more comfortable if if we would continue this, if we look at six weeks, that is April 13. Take the liberty to check with our city clerk and that is an open date at this time. So I would move that we continue this item and leave the public hearing open on H 2020 dash 0047 until April 13.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember.
I second that motion.
Motion second. Is there discussion on the motion or further feedback for the applicant to consider between now and then?
Mr. Mayor.
There you go.
Councilman Kavner.
Thanks. Sorry about that. Just for for conversation, I know it is sometimes common that when we continue an item, we limit the continuance for additional public testimony in a more limited scope. I don't know if that's something that we would want to consider. Again, looking at maybe the precedent that we may set with this particular continuance to try and be as consistent as possible over the next few weeks. So if we want to leave the public hearing open, I'm certainly supportive of that. If we wanted to limit it for additional testimony about how potential legislation could impact this project, I'd be curious to hear how the rest of my colleagues feel.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
In my opinion, we, I don't I don't feel like there's a need for additional public testimony on the application itself. I mean, the reason that we are having a discussion about the continuance is is not related to this application. And so I would be comfortable with counsel continuing it and just making a decision on the application at that future meeting. I I don't I don't like like Councilman Kavner said, you know, curious to hear what my other council members have to say, but I don't know that the public will be necessarily discussing property taxes in relationship to this application specifically.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglan.
I'm I'm open to to, you know, what council wanted, my thinking on this and making the motion with leaving the public hearing open is just the fact that just in case, I I don't think there'll be additional testimony or changes or anything that comes of it. It just allows us to keep the record open and hear from the public if they want to weigh in on this. But I think the developer has gone to great lengths to include feedback and to rectify where they could on on many of the issues and And it's, I think, more just kind of a courtesy to leave it open as opposed to closing it and having the hearing on the 13th to make a, hopefully, a final decision. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
The Council could also stipulate that the public hearing may be open, but only new testimony based on new information would be accepted. So, that way, if there were something related to the legislative actions or something, and then the applicant wanted to weigh in on how they aren't going to impact that way, you still have that ability, but it's just on new information, not the whole project.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I know that as, as a body, we value public testimony. My, my thought was merely out of respect for the public. If we, again, I don't know what's on our agenda over the next few weeks, but if you have a particularly contentious public hearing where, you know, individuals have come to planning and zoning and voiced their concerns, and then they come to a city council meeting, they voice their concerns, that they feel obligated to come to the continued city council meeting that's really designed to focus about pending legislation, and feel the need that they may need to come and voice those same concerns again. So, just, that was where, where my mindset was, is I want to be respectful to the public's time. I, I think that it is our intention to, to take these public hearings like they are a, a complete hearing with waiting till we have some clarification on one particular element before we render a decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I, I think Councilman Cavanagh raises a good point, especially about the point that how we handle this one kind of sets the tone for the rest of them. And with Mr. Nary's advice, I, I would amend my motion and make it that we continue H2020-0047 to April 13th and limit public hearing items to new, new items only. Any public hearing would be related to new items only. Does that, correct, Mr. Mayor, Nary?
Based on new information, so.
I'm sorry.
Information.
Based on new information only.
Does the second agree? We've got a revised motion. Is there further conversation on the motion at this time? If not, ask the clerk to call the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is continued. Thank you for the conversation and look forward to seeing you again in April. With that, we'll move on to number eight, or under ordinance, item eight, ordinance number 211918. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's ordinance related to H20200087 Spurwing Sewer Easement for annexation of a parcel of land, being a portion of Lot 2, Block 1 of Spurwing Subdivision, as on file in Book 69 of Placid, page 7104, in the Office of the Recorder for Ada County, Idaho. Said parcel being situated in the southwest one quarter of Section 23, Township 4 North, Range 1 West Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, and being more particularly described as Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of .6 acres of land from RUT to R4 Medium Low Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Council, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety here or online? Being no one make that request, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance 21-1918 with the suspension of rules.
Mayor, second motion.
I have a motion second to approve this ordinance under suspension of rules. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, the ayes have it, the motion is agreed to, and the ordinance is passed. Council, anything on our future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion? Councilwoman Burnt.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
I have a motion second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, the ayes have it.